Where is that? Matter of fact, I have an R R G D. Probably have. Yeah. That's exactly. Yeah. I got one. What is it?
So I would do, I'm saying ninety nine percent yes, because you gotta remember. Um, boat at park. We call it the milking.
Okay.
So the park system drive in has.
Well, I didn't want to hear.
No, but I'm saying like, like Maggie Burke.
Yeah.
You may not. Um, let me, let me have, let me have, um, there's, there's a map. Let me get the map.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, Mr. Mayor. Our thing.
I couldn't do that. I had to just shut out of my room. Well, no, I got plenty going on. It's just not back. Well, no, I got plenty going on. It's just not back. Everybody did. Yeah. That's very, very. Well, that's true. I heard it. I heard it. You have to do that. It's nothing but what they do. They go deal with all the other people. How bad is this? Well, I know. Well, yeah. All right. Huh? What is, which one? Hey, how you doing? Good looking. Now, do you have some? The mayor? Okay, what's, what's? What one? Oh, I, I know where Oliver Place there is. It's, it's overgrown with grass. It's, it's in the middle of a neighborhood. But, but why do you got Oakland purple? It doesn't?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Your meeting of this Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order at six oh five P M. For February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty three. We begin this evening with the invocation. Give the floor to Councilman Parker for introduction.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, brother president. I give you Pastor Cornelius Berry of Word Believing Center Church. He will give us our invocation this evening.
If you could turn the microphone, the button on the right. You're good.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Uh, thank you, Pastor Parker. Can we pray, please? Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you. We give you glory and praise for this day and this moment. Father, we thank you for the opportunity that you allowed us to come together here at the city council meeting. Father, we thank you for our mayor. We thank you for the city councilman. And Father God, we just thank you for what you're doing in the city of Pontiac. Father, as we discuss and, and, and talk about different things, let this council be on one accord. Let them have the people best interest of the city. Father, we thank you for the city of Pontiac. We thank you for what you're doing in the city. And we thank you that the city is flowing with milk and honey. I thank you now, Lord God, for the favor that you give our mayor when he talk with different people concerning our city. That father, that they see the need for the, for the businesses that come in the city, for our residents here in the city. And so we give you the glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance found by a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could please remain standing for a moment of silence in our community. Since we gathered last, we learned of the passing of James Sabish, a military veteran and longtime resident of the Harrington Hills neighborhood in Pontiac and a U A W retiree as well. Mr. Sabish very faithfully was at almost every city council meeting, most of the neighborhood gatherings and district meetings for District Five where he lived, very active when there was a cleanup. I could see him every weekend here in the city council parking lot recycling over and over again. And so we will miss and remember James Sabish, a life, a long life well-lived. We send our condolences to his family, to his neighbors, and want to acknowledge Councilman Parker, who's been a strong friend and advocate for him as he's endured different challenges in, in these later years of his life. So let us remember now the passing of our neighbor, James Sabish, with a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James. McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Quorum being established. Could I please have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Kathleen James from this evening's meeting for personal reasons?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we excuse Councilwoman James. We send her our regards and well wishes. She is traveling. She had a death in the family and is traveling to those home-going services. We send our love and well wishes to her and her family. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the motion to authorize the excusing of Councilwoman Kathleen James from this meeting for personal reasons. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, and we send our well wishes to Councilwoman James in this difficult time for her and her family. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we approve this evening's agenda. With this main motion now before us, Councilman Nicholson has a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution that would be a city council resolution, so it'd be the new number seven, and all of the resolutions would move down correspondingly. The title of this resolution is Pontiac City Council Resolution Demanding Accountability by D T E Energy for Pontiac Residents.
Mr. President, I believe that's Councilman Goodman's resolution.
What did I say?
I will support.
Oh. All right, so Goodman moves, Nicholson seconds. Thank you for flagging my brain. All right, so we now have the amendment before us. Any rationale you'd like to offer, Councilman?
Uh, we've all seen what hap- what has happened in the past few days with the after effects of the D T E ice storm, whether or not your power went out, you had someone who else's power went out, or again, just simply the fact that eight hundred thousand people lost power over the past couple of days here in the state of Michigan. There are things that have to happen after that since it's happened too many times, so I figured that we should bring this resolution forth.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to amend the agenda? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the amendment to the agenda. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The amendment passes, and so we're now at the main motion, adoption of the agenda as amended, meaning that we have already added this new resolution. Any further discussion or amendments? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the agenda as amended. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda has been adopted, and we will proceed accordingly. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved. Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Rutherford, that we approve this evening's consent agenda, which includes the February twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three city council meeting minutes. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. We are now at special presentations, and we're delighted to have three very noteworthy and interesting topics for the community and this council. The first of the three special presentations, we're joined by the Oakland County Water Resources Commission, who'll be presenting about the Norton Street Innovation Project. We give the floor to Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner, the Honorable Jim Nash, and his team. You have the floor, sir, and welcome.
Well, thank you. It's always great to be here. We've got a great project to talk about today, the Augusta Drain Norton Street Project. This is something that we've been working on for some time. I think it's gonna be, it's, it's an installation of green infrastructure. This is what we're trying to show people is, is how we can, can really work with storm, storm water is to, to keep it on the surface so we can go into the ground. So these are the kind of things that we can do. We can make a beautiful park out of it, and this is just, uh, those kind of projects that we can do with your city that, that we can really make it as, as good as we can, and we, we want to play that role in that. So I'm here to introduce the people who are gonna talk about this project, Joel and, I'm s-
Stephanie.
Stephanie, I'm so sorry, Stephanie. Stephanie's gonna describe the project.
Great. Thanks for that introduction, Commissioner. I'm Stephanie Petrillo, an environmental planner and the project manager for this project. Today, we have several members from our environmental team and our marketing and communications team. Some of them will be speaking with you as well, but we're really excited to be here and, and tell you about this project. This project has been several years in the making, and we have a lot of great partners that we're working with. This just shows a few of them, so it's really been a community effort to get this going, and we wanted to take the time to recognize them. I'm gonna turn it over to Joel quickly to talk about the Augusta Drain, a little history, and kind of what the property looks like today.
Thanks, Stephanie. Joel Cohn of County Water Resources. Yeah, just a little history on the drain. Back before it was constructed in the early seventies, it was a, a natural water course, which can be shown by the yellow line there. It says the original location of the Augusta Drain, it actually was not the Augusta Drain at that point. It was actually the Pontiac Creek, which is a natural water course. That water course actually goes north into the lake region of Osmond, Harris, and Terry Lakes, which is the reason why the Augusta Drain was built. According to our records, there were some flooding issues within the lakes area, and they wanted to lower the elevation of the lakes, as well as some other flooding upstream. And so the city petitioned the drain office, or the drain office at that time, not the water resources, to construct a new drain. The engineers decided to move the open ditch up a block and create a channel that could move water more easily into the Clinton River. So this is, thank you. So this is part of the construction photos from nineteen seventy-two. Couldn't find a lot of great photos, but as, as you can see, it's some pretty big pipe and some pretty big channeling that, that went on, pretty innovative project for the time. And then here it is today, nineteen seventy-four. You can see it hasn't changed much in, you know, thirty-plus years, forty-plus years. The, the drain office maintained control of the property, the district did the entire time. All we did the entire time, though, was mow it. So blank slate, wait for a project. And here it is today as well. As you can see, wonderful spot for a great project in a, in a great neighborhood.
Gonna go back here real quick. What's unique about this property is that the Augusta Drain Drainage District owns it roughly five acres, so that allows our office to do some improvements to it. This is unlike a lot of other county drains where we simply have an easement on the adjacent property for access and maintenance requirements. But now I'm gonna switch gears a little bit and kind of talk about why we're here. What's, what's the reason for this project? Across the state of Michigan and throughout the country, non-point source pollution is the largest source of pollution to our rivers, lakes, and streams. Part of my job, as well as the other environmental team members, is to help address and reduce non-point source pollution from getting into our county drains. This is pollution that's caused by sediment, organic materials, sometimes toxic substances and nutrients that gener- are generated from certain land use types. And I think this graphic is really important to, to look at, because it shows the different land use types and kind of what the pollution is generated on those. If you look in the back, the farm and agriculture, you're going to find a lot of sediment, pesticides, herbicides, potentially animal waste runoff. City and industry, you get into oil and grease, a lot of stuff coming off of vehicles and machines. Construction sites, you'll get a lot of sediment and debris. And then our neighborhoods and roads, a lot of the similar things, oil and grease, household waste, pet waste, things like that. So these land uses produce or cause this pollution, which is really just a part of living in the modern world. But the real problem comes when it rains or snow melts, because then it's bringing that pollution down into our lakes, rivers, and streams. So now we have water that we don't want to drink, we don't want to swim, fish, or recreate in. And so this is something that we're trying to address through this project. And this isn't a unique issue. It's not unique to Pontiac, it's not unique to Oakland County, it's found across the state and across the country. It's an issue that everyone's dealing with, and our staff is tasked with helping to try to prevent it. Unfortunately, like a lot of environmental issues, there isn't much funding to go towards fixing these problems. So try to combat that. Our office put together a project plan and submitted it to Michigan's Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, or Eagle, and their Clean Water State Revolving Fund, or S R F Loan Program. The plan identified seventeen projects throughout the county that we had intended to work on in the next several years, and the Augusta Drain Norton Street Project was one of them. All of these projects would address stormwater pollution, runoff, and non-point source pollution prior to entering our county drains. In October, we received word that this project would not only be funded, but it would be funded entirely through grant dollars in the American Rescue Plan. So that's going to amount to roughly one point three million dollars. The goal for this project is to treat and collect at least three hundred and fifty thousand gallons of stormwater every year. We plan to do that through the creation of bioretention cells, or large rain gardens, which is essentially a depression in the land that holds water for less than two days. And to get the water in there, we propose curb cuts or modifications to catch basins. The purpose of this is to then infiltrate the water or soak it into the ground so that it never reaches the Augusta Drain or the Storm Sewer System. This slide shows several examples of different kinds of bioretention or rain gardens. You can see that there's a wide variety of size, shape, and plant aesthetic. This is something we hope to engage the local community with, to see what kind of aesthetic they're looking for. The middle picture is also a good example of a curb cut. As water's coming down the curb during a storm, it's then going to go through this cut, over the rocks, and into the garden. The rocks help to dissipate the energy or slow it down, and also collects a lot of sediment and trash to make it easier to clean out when maintenance is required. So I mentioned that we received notice of funding in October, and we just started doing some design, preliminary, preliminary design in, right before the new year. Some of the first things we needed to identify were the conditions of the soil. So in mid-January and early February, we started taking soil borings and conducted two infiltration tests. This is to help us decide, or figure out what kind of soil is on this property. Are we finding a lot of clay or sand? Is, are we running into backfill in, from the prior homes? When we're looking for areas for bioretention cells, we, we'd really like to come across a lot of sand, because that soaks up the water a lot faster than clay. That's not to say we can't put a cell on clay, we would just have to amend the soil a little bit more, and that means mixing in sand and compost so that the water can infiltrate and not stay there for days. Our infiltration tests at the intersection with Florence found some more clay, and closer to Sanderson Avenue, we found a lot of sand. We are still waiting on the final reports for both the soil borings and the infiltration tests. Our design firm, Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, has also done some drone imagery and conducted their initial survey for the property. They've started to organize some draft design plans that show the existing topography in the area that they'll, they'll then use that to help them determine how the water's going to get into the site. In order to help us finalize the design, we are looking for community input, which I'm gonna let Tricia talk about.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tricia Beruzik. Thank you, Stephanie. So public engagement, it's really important for us to engage the community, and we are holding a, two community events. We're holding one in March and June, March twenty-third and June fifteenth. And so at these community events, they will be on the project's site, and we would love input from the community to help us name the gathering space. We don't have a name currently for it yet, so we're looking for input from the community on what we could name this. on what we could name this area. We'll also have some plant selections for the rain gardens that Stephanie spoke about. We'd love to, you know, really see what you guys think and what you'd like to see in this space. And also just future visioning. As Stephanie said, it's five acres of land, so there's lots of potential there. We'd love to partner, potential park we've talked about, but we would need some partnership with that, so. For this community event, we've reached out to the residents in the areas. Postcards have gone out to everyone inviting them to our community event. We're also gonna be walking door to door in the community to invite them to come as well, just a reminder. I also have our website up here, oakgov.com/nortonstreet. On that, we will be posting project updates and all the information that you need. So please come to our community event. The first one is in March 23rd. We will have food there. Also, we want, you know, bring your kids. We'll have some family-friendly activities, activities for kids there. And then the same one with June, we're gonna have kind of an ice cream social. So please come, have some ice cream on us and see our progress. We also are really interested in doing a public art opportunity. The drain has some artwork on it already and we'd like to kind of look into continuing that and maybe honoring something in the community, so. Public engagement for this project is very important to us. Please come and join us. I have some flyers with me too, so I can leave some behind if anybody needs that. But yeah, we would love to have you guys help us name this park and contribute, so thank you.
So moving forward, our next step is to have that public engagement event. We will have one in March and June. We do look to begin construction this fall and hopefully complete it within the next year and open it to the public. With that, I don't know if we have time for questions or comments, but here's our contact if anyone does wanna reach out later.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here this evening and for your commitment to Pontiac for this project because we know the Water Resources Commission serves the entire county of Oakland. Now for questions and feedback from city council members? President Protem Carrington.
Yes, thank you. Just one quick question concerning, I think it's a beautiful project. What is gonna be your guys' cleanup schedule to make sure that you monitor that park and make sure no dumping is in that park?
Yeah, that property is part of our maintenance schedule. Once this is constructed, we will have a more detailed maintenance program for it. And a lot of that depends on the plants that are put in there and how often they require maintenance, if there's mulch and that kinda thing. It's, you know, not far from our office, so we do hope to have a heavy presence on there.
All right, thank you. No more further questions.
Councilman Nicholson?
Does the current reservoir retain a lot of water?
No, I don't believe so.
So if we're taking the water, we're trying to drive the water out and have it sort of naturally filtrate and end up where we want it naturally, wouldn't, how are we gonna contain that space? I could just imagine it's gonna be a skateboarder's haven, that they're gonna be jumping fences and getting down into this potentially dangerous area.
It currently has a fence around it, so hopefully nobody's, you know, skateboarding down there right now. I think it gets flashy when it rains, but other than that, what we're doing is up on the land, so we're not changing the actual drain itself. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, it occurs to me that if we're taking a lot of the water out, it would be a more interesting place for children, right? To see this empty gully that, you know, has these big drains and to play in, you know, for potentially homeless people seeking refuge to get into those drains when there's not water there. And then for water to be let into that area, it's, I'm just a little nervous.
The project will be taking water from the neighborhood, so it's not really, it's not gonna be a noticeable difference of what is currently going through the drain itself.
Okay.
In the large scheme of things, this is a very small amount of water compared to what is currently going through that drain.
The Augusta Drain comes from the county campus, so it's carrying a lot of water already. This is just, this much of that area won't be contributing more to it, but there'll be enough going by that there won't be any dryness. There should, you know, it was pretty dry last year, so it might have once or twice, but generally speaking, it's gonna have flow in it pretty much all the time.
Okay. Yeah, the fencing that I see that's there now is relatively residential-grade fencing. So that, just wondering about height and maybe, you know, potential, anything we could do to keep it as safe as possible is my concern.
Yeah, there's currently no plans to adjust the fencing. As part of our engagement, we do, we are planning a resident survey and one of the things we are gonna ask them about is their perceived notion of safety. You know, are they even going on the property? Do they think it's safe? So that's something we will be considering.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Ma'am, good evening. You answered part of the question, but the other part I'm asking for security reasons because we do know that population has a homeless issue over there. And so I'm not trying to beat up, you know, a dead horse, but you have to be concerned with how it's gonna lay out because if I was homeless and I needed a place to stay and the drain was emptied, I'd go stay under the drain. So I have to ask, why didn't y'all think about the fences? And if you haven't thought about it then, maybe you should think about it now. So my question is, you said earlier about a minute ago, you guys are not gonna change the fencing, but you have to think about safety. Kids could drown in two inches of water. I'm just, you know, I like to be realistic. So what are you gonna do to have a preventive maintenance? Because if you're gonna have this area open, you're leading yourself to a situation where a kid could actually go down there if the fences are high enough they can get through there. What are your measures are y'all gonna take? Something about me. Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So actually, at the end of this project, you will see the drain probably less than you do currently now. There will be a lot of water in it. There won't be, you won't see a noticeable difference in the amount of water in the drain. There will still be a lot of water running through it almost all year. Obviously, in June and July, you might have a dry spell, but, and the drain is very deep. So there currently aren't people getting in there to, I mean, living in there. But it's, but we're looking to add like a natural slope, like grasses or like a pollinator area along that slope. Because right now, the slope is cut. And so in the future, we're looking at potentially the slope being like a natural area with pollinators. So there would be, you would see the drain much less.
Okay. I take that. Thank you.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
So this is probably weirdly a place of fascination for me because I care a lot about bioretention and bioswells. Like this is a thing that I did for a decent amount of time educationally-wise, working actually with RuPauliak. So from my understanding, to make this a little bit easier for my colleagues, the work that would be happening would be happening in the grass area that is currently already cut and flattened, I'd say arguably more accessible because it's just flat grass that ends up at a fence. Whereas this would be introducing, again, a bioretention system that would be in the grass area leading up to the drain. That would essentially try to filter the water that is in the neighborhood, that is hitting the land before it reaches the drain to kind of more naturally filter it before it reaches the water treatment plant. Is that a fair assessment?
Yep, exactly.
So to just, to put things better into scale, I would argue that this would make it more difficult for people to reach the drain because you're introducing more wildlife, more natural barriers that make the access to that fencing much more difficult. Not to say that things shouldn't be happening with that. Still, I can understand the concern and obviously the community in the area can say that. But just wanted to make sure that we had a better understanding of what exactly would be happening in that area and the purpose of it.
Yeah, so I move back to this slide here because this slide shows kind of examples of what may be in those areas. Now, it wouldn't be completely, you know, you look at, I don't know, a couple hundred feet of lawn, what you have now between the back of curb and the drain itself. And it's basically just cut lawn as you described. It's like your backyard. In the future, it'll be more something that looks like maybe one of those pictures. There may be some areas that are something different. We're talking about a few, probably three different scenarios, one for each block, just because of the current, what we know currently about the soils and the infiltration, in the properties for infiltration. In some of those areas, we may not be able to do an infiltration because it may be all clay. So we'll have to do something more of a surface treatment. In another area, we may be able to do basically a depression where we could have, you know, kids being able to have like an open field to play in, but it'll be an infiltration area, whereas the water hits it, it just infiltrates into the ground fairly quickly.
Right. And then it's like my quick follow-up question and then I'll be done with that is, sorry, I'm trying to figure out how I wanna, how I wanna word this. So with that, I kind of know that there's also concerns about water level. So like the, it's not that there would be water, again, removed from the water that's already flowing through the system. It's to try to, again, filter it naturally before it just immediately jumps into the system like it would currently.
Right. Currently, it would flow into the Storm Sewer System along Norton Street and flow out either to North Johnson or Sanderson and then into the drain. We're talking about a little over two acres of land that we would be collecting water from and we're like 350,000 gallons a year. So it's not a large amount of water, but it is, it's something, it's kind of a showpiece to show what can be done in everywhere.
Is there any benefit to doing this opposed to just letting it go into the drain system that it, like it would currently?
We're removing pollutants from the water before it goes into the drain.
Thank you.
Councilman Nichols?
Just for those that are working on outreach, there is a built-in art community on Norton Street with the Cranbrook graduate students. There is a couple of houses that were just full of Cranbrook, a couple of teachers that had good connections there. And I know they haven't been there for the last two years because they'd rented outside of, the kids weren't at school because of COVID. So they did rent elsewhere, but reaching out to their alumni association might be really, I'm sure they have a huge heart for that area. It was, you know, a big mainstay for the Cranbrook grad students. And they're all different, you know, they have, you know, 13 different programs. So, you know, art in every type of capacity, they could really be interested in getting involved.
Fantastic. Thank you. We'll look into that.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
I take it back, he already answered.
Okay.
That's okay, babe.
Mayor Grimal?
I just wanna thank you for your innovative approach to these issues, really throughout the county, but certainly including here in Pontiac. Not only will this be of environmental benefit, but also it's a really cost-effective approach to addressing what has already been and will continue to be an increasing frequency of storm events. So I think it's a really positive project in a lot of ways and as your slideshow demonstrates, it will also help beautify this space as well and make it more aesthetically pleasing to neighbors. So I just wanna thank you for your innovation and your continued concern for the community.
Well, absolutely. This is a wonderful project and we look forward to having a little park there with a trail going through it. I mean, this is the kind of thing that just makes a neighborhood really more of a neighborhood and I think that's a great way of doing that. Plus, again, this is an educational thing around stormwater containment. It's, this is the future. We're gonna have to be doing this much more often. So people gotta get used to that and then once they do, it's beautiful. So that's what we're looking to do.
Councilman Parker?
I just have one question. And the pictures certainly look lovely, but I just had a question in regards to the plants that you're gonna use. They're all gonna be native to Michigan, correct? So they don't bring anything that will, like the flag might sit out here now.
No, we're looking for native plants. We're looking for plants that will bloom through the season. So some will bloom in the summer, I mean, spring, some in the summer, some in the fall. So that's the kind of thing. We wanna have blooms going all the time. And again, it's just little bitty gardens everywhere, you know? People love that, so.
Any further discussion? I wanna finally conclude by encouraging residents in that nearby vicinity to participate in the March 23rd as well as the June community engagement sessions. It's your opportunity to shape what this asset could be. That there are unique resources that are available, so let's maximize them so that way it's, the outcome is to the neighborhood's best improvement. Councilman Rutherford's a strong advocate for the Norton and Augusta and Florence and Sanderson area residents and so we wanna make sure that they take advantage of this opportunity, literally being brought to their doorstep to shape this project. So we just really wanna emphasize that. And for those that live in the nearby vicinity, they're also welcomed. District 2 is across Johnson Street, District 6 is across the railroad tracks, District 3 is that away from the other, you know, sort of corner. So it's a really nice way to hit multiple different neighborhoods and for there to be that sort of bike or walk pathway, it's a great asset that can connect multiple neighborhoods as well.
I look forward to seeing everybody. I hope to see you there.
Thank you very much. We're now at the second special presentation, the City of Pontiac Home Repair Program. We give the floor to Mayor Grimal to queue it up.
Michael.
Well, thank you very much, President McGinnis. The city council approved broad categories of ARPA spending back in December, I think it was. As the community knows, the city is receiving almost $38 million in American Rescue Plan Act dollars from the federal government. And the city council, as I mentioned, approved the broad categories of spending late last year. But as we discussed then, we need to put the details to each of those general categories of spending. And we're doing that by quarter of this year. So every three months or so, the Grants Department will be unveiling proposals for how to spend specific categories of funding. And this quarter, the focus has been on two areas of spending. The home repair program to provide grants to homeowners in the community to improve their homes, as well as park funding to improve and enhance city parks, which is long overdue and much needed as well. Next quarter, we'll be unveiling workforce development proposals as well as small business assistance proposals. And subsequent quarters will bring additional details for all their programming. But tonight, we're here to talk about the homeowner improvement program as well as the parks improvement program. And so without further ado, I turn it over to our Grants and Philanthropy Department Director, Alex Borngesser.
Thank you, Mayor. Like the mayor mentioned, today we are presenting merely an overview of the program that we've put together thus far. Budget amendments and formal council resolutions will take place at another time. What we'd really like to do is engage in conversation with council. We did present this program to the subcommittee, to the Economic Development Subcommittee, and received positive feedback. So I'd like to just give everyone a quick recap of the American Rescue Plan Act. These resources were allocated and awarded to the city of Pontiac. They're meant to mitigate the impacts, the negative impacts of COVID-19 on our community. The city did receive $37.7 million from this act and we did present a formal program overview to council which was approved by formal council resolution many months ago. We've performed a good deal of community engagement and spoke with residents and received positive feedback about the establishment of a home repair program. Just for context, these funds need to be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and they need to be fully expended by December 31st of 2026. So that's really the timeline that we're working with here. Part of the permissible use guidance comes from the Treasury's final rule, which is how we go about making sure that each of the programs that we're creating using ARPA are permissible under the act. So for the sake of this conversation related to home repair, the final rule does indicate that a home repair program for unavoidable household needs or home repairs is an enumerated eligible use of these resources. This is a slide from a prior presentation that was given and subsequently approved by council resolution. The council did approve of a program which was comprised of $3.5 million for owner-occupied home repair program. You'll also see a line item for administration of funds at $122,000, which is meant to offset any costs related to the administration of the home repair program. And again, you'll see the permissible use line listed below. The city of Pontiac aspires to build a home repair program because we desire to help homeowners complete major home repairs to create safer, healthier environments to live in. This is also a neighborhood revitalization tool which can subsequently impact economic development and crime and safety. The list goes on. So my colleagues, Renee Hall and Deborah Younger, are going to walk through all of the specifics regarding the program and then will be available to answer any questions you might have. and then will be available to answer any questions you might have.
Good evening, everyone. Just to go through a few of the program details, a homeowner has to occupy the home. They have to be living, living in the home and a city, a resident of the City of Pontiac. They have to meet the requirements of 80% area median income. And they also have to complete the application and fill out all documents that are required for approval. Some of the documents needed to prove that they are the homeowner, the deed, whether it's a quick sale, quick claim to the, to the property, you have to have homeowner's insurance. Your home can't be in foreclosure. You have to be current on your mortgage and your property taxes. There can't be any liens on your property. Again, the home has to be located in the city. And you have to give us permission to speak to a third party such as your mortgage lender and people who could, you know, give us information that we need, that you are current on taxes and things like that. When we speak of 80% area median income, we try to include, to make sure that a lot of people within the city that own their home qualify for this program. So as you can see, it's a pretty high margin for folks and families. So that's what we mean by 80% median income.
Good evening. One of the things I'm gonna talk about are eligible repairs. We're proposing $25,000 maximum. Order of prioritization would be those things that make the house DSNS. DSNS is decent, safe, and sanitary. Additionally, we would address environmental needs. If a house has lead-based paint in it, if we're putting more than $7,500 in the house, we must address lead by state law. And of course, if there were children in the house, we would automatically address lead. Ultimately, we also would address asbestos if we find asbestos. Now, sometimes we don't have to address those if we're not disturbing them. But most repairs will in fact disturb them, so we will have to address abatement of lead and asbestos. And after that, we will do the repairs. So the order of prioritization would be environmental, then decent, safe, and sanitary, with the goal being to preserve these homes into the housing stock and make them livable for years to come so that people can stay and remain in their homes. And so I think Renee basically listed, so the documentation, but basically we're looking for documentation that proves ownership that in fact identifies the income, mortgage information, income information, tax information. Those are the type of documents. These documents will in fact be attached to an application. We have a sample application that we're asking homeowners to fill out. The application is pretty straightforward. It's name information. And we even asked the homeowners what is their wish list, with the understanding that they may not get all on their wishlist, but in fact, because we have to address decent, safe, and sanitary first. But if we have room left over, then in fact, we would address those wishlist items.
So we're looking at building out standard operating procedures, workflows, all of those types of things. We don't intend to get into those weeds today. We will present all of the necessary operational infrastructure, infrastructure to stand up a program such as this. It will largely mirror the standard operating procedures and some of the infrastructure we put in place for the Grants Department. So I'm sure you can imagine what that looks like. We'll establish workflows and make sure that residents understand procedure. All of this, we intend to provide support services for this entire process from start to finish, understanding that this is the first time this type of program has been released in Pontiac in a long time, and that we want to make sure that residents have equal and equitable access to this program, that we're creating fair procedures that are easy to access. So there will be many of us here at City Hall who are currently assigned to this activity, but also two additional positions, one a housing specialist and the other being a home repair building inspector. These will be temporary positions that end at the, at the end of the term of this grant funding or this federal funding. So I'd be happy to take any questions. With one final note, we do have, we are working on putting together a communications plan to be in each of the districts, to put together town halls, to make sure that residents know how to navigate this program. We do, we do have an established website that is blank right now, but upon approval from city council, we'll have lots of helpful information on it, a specific dedicated line for home repair, a specific email distribution for home repair. We will be here and accessible to our residents and in the neighborhoods and in your community centers and at your places of worship to make sure that everyone has access. So for now, this is a general overview of the program, and we're really interested in feedback so we can make sure that this fits everyone's needs.
Councilwoman Rutherford.
Okay. Thanks. Uh, thank you so much. I have two questions of importance. Number one, who is vetting the contractors that's gonna be doing the work? Meaning, how do we know they actually know how to do the work? And are we making sure when we give these contractors these bids, that they don't get paid until the completion of the building or the repairs?
Do you want to take this question?
That's my first question.
First, we have developed an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications, that is now on our website. Contractors are asked to provide detailed information about their financial history, previous work, references, banking information. I will vet, along with other people, the applications, the qualifications, and go out and look at examples of work before any contractor is accepted.
Okay. The second question is, how are we going to ensure that these contractors have insurance?
That's part of the requirement for the, no contract will be signed without evidence of insurance. We're requiring $1 million in insurance for each, by each contractor.
So Larry Lee can't just come do what y'all gonna make sure?
I, I need to see proof of insurance, and it's part of, it'll be part of our contract with them. We've set the limit at $1 million.
Thanks. Last one is this, because I said it too, but I, you already asked, but I want to get this done. For the seniors, is their first priority for seniors or is their first priority for first-time home buyers? Because sometimes for, is there any preference that are given to seniors? And if so, why not? Or if so, why?
At this point, we are looking at first in, first, first out, not singling out or prioritizing anyone in the first round. Now, as we move forward, in rounds two and three, we may see that we need to address other things. So this is why we're coming out with a pilot this year and not asking you to allocate all the resources. This is the first time, in fact, we will be doing something like this in the City of Pontiac. And while I've had experience in running a home repair program, it still is a first for, for this community. So we want to make sure that we get it right. So we're not asking, we're not going to ask you to allocate all of the funding in this first round so that we can in fact make adjustments if it's required.
Good job. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, sir. Couple of questions. And thank you very much, because I've been sending folks to you for a while now to get this program going. So I thank you for getting it to there. But as I looked at the eligible repairs, one of the things I know that I've been asked is, it did not discuss driveways or ramps for senior citizens who may need them. Would that be included, or is that something?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. We have listed access on, as one of, barrier-free access is the first item up there. We would consider that to be part of...
Driveways and...
Correct. And even sidewalks that lead into the house, not the sidewalk along the street, but if the sidewalk leading up into the house was in a state of disrepair, that would be considered.
And my second question, because I know it's known to everybody that Pontiac has a literacy issue, so there will be there be administrative help to help fill out the paperwork?
Yes. And we also, I've reached out to La Familia and others. We also are going to work on bilingual translation and making sure that our residents that speak other languages have an ability to access that. So yes, and I've talked to the literacy council. They're willing to help as well.
Okay. Last question. When can we start sending them?
When you approve it. But after that, after that, we hope to launch it. You know, we do have to, we do have two vacant staff positions we need to hire. That's important that we move forward with that. So that'll be part of the budget that we present in the resolution going forward. So we hope that you will move forward with us in getting that done. So we have to stamp up, or we're, staff up, but we're hoping that with the new spring that comes and we clean our houses, we also be getting repairs. So we are hoping, you know, early April to be able to launch this.
Since you mentioned, what would be the minimum requirement for the two vacant positions? If you can go through those real quick.
The housing specialist will be the person who deals with the intake of the applications, who processes the applications, gets the verification. We'll go out in the community and work with, making sure applicants get able to fill out and complete the application. The home repair person is a building inspector who will, once we, the application is complete, the housing specialist will give it to the inspector. The inspector will go out, look at the house, and write specifications of the work that is to be done. At that point, the work will go out for bid to approve list of contractors.
Thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
Further discussion? I really want to celebrate that we have Economic Development Manager, Younger, as part of the City of Pontiac team. Her professional experience running similar programs in other municipalities of substantial size is already proving to be very valuable for bringing this pilot program online. I want to ask Director Borngesser, this is of course American Rescue Plan Act funding that's essentially seeding this program, but do you envision that this could essentially be, once the proof of concept is, is fully operational, you've got the, the infrastructure, we've developed this engagement with the residents, and the need has been identified, that you'd be able to leverage that for other funding opportunities, where other institutions, philanthropic or governmental agencies, in, as the years go on, that we can try and pursue additional funding to keep the program alive beyond just a limited, finite window?
You're exactly right. So like Debra mentioned, what we're presenting is really just phase one of this program. We intend to break the 3.5 million into three phases so we can learn and adjust as we go, with the intention to kind of roll this directly into bringing the home funds back in-house. So that's a piece of it. We also know that our community partners are doing a lot of this similar work. We've had extensive conversations with our partners at OLSA and Lighthouse and Habitat for Humanity, understanding that there are opportunities for partnership and grant applications, kind of leveraging the success of this, the eventual success of this program for future grant opportunities. So this program doesn't stop here when this particular pot of money runs out. We intend for this to be a, a piece of the Pontiac City Hall fabric.
Thank you. Mayor Grimal.
Just to amplify that point, and by way of history, I, I think most Pontiac residents are aware of the community development block grant dollars being administered by the county since emergency management. I think what's often lost in that conversation is that there's a specific category of federal funds that's also administered by the county called home funds. And that's really where the city loses out most as a result of the county administering those dollars. Because those home funds, we, we are awarded, in quotation marks, a substantial amount of home funds based on the income profile of Pontiac's residents. But when the county administers those dollars, they're essentially intermingled with other county home funds that are administered by the county as well. And as a result, although a disproportionately high amount of those funds come as a result of Pontiac and our income profile, that is, we don't end up receiving, or our homeowners specifically don't end up receiving a proportional amount of those dollars. So a lot of our dollars end up going to people who live in other communities. And it's one of the reasons why we're so eager to bring back the administration of the CDBG dollars and those home fund dollars to Pontiac. And those home funds in particular are to be used to help homeowners with home improvement. So as we seek to, to bring those dollars back in-house, that is a regular, ongoing, recurrent, annual income stream that can be used to continue supporting our homeowners make needed home improvements to their houses.
Councilman Parker, then Councilman Rutherford.
One last question. As I was thinking about it in some of the other meetings I've been with today, is this, have you guys also considered partnering with the, with workforce development teams like TDC, CarNav and those groups?
We have, we have considered it. We wanted to get this first phase out as quickly as we possibly could, understanding that it's the most immediate need in the community. But like the mayor mentioned and Debra mentioned, we will be putting together a workforce development program in the next quarter, and also trying to weave these two programs together in the ways that make sense. So Debra has had many of those conversations with workforce development and career readiness partners, and we intend to do just that.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford.
I guess this is the question for the administration. What is the timeline where we're actually gonna be, be in control of the CBDG funds? What's the actual date?
So I'm, I'm gonna defer the, the specific answer to that to Deputy Mayor Stevens and to Director Borngesser, because they're been in touch with HUD around the specifics. But we, we do still need to hire one or two additional positions in relation to our grants team in order to really be able and be in a position to make the case to HUD. The other thing that we need to do is we need to catch up on back program years of CDBG dollars, because there are still unspent dollars, and this is what, what we collectively inherited when we came into office a year ago. There are still unspent dollars going back as far as the 2016 program year for CDBG dollars. So we need to catch up on those, those programs and actually spend those dollars in order to make a compelling case to HUD that we're capable of running this program ourself. And, and I'll defer again in terms of the specific timeline to Deputy Mayor Stevens and Director Borngesser.
So the short, direct answer to your question is, we don't have an actual date as of yet. The, the process with HUD, as you heard the mayor speak, we, we are not quite in the, we are not quite in the position to make a fully compelling request. But that aside, we, we have to have a, an official request to HUD, which has to review it, and then we go through and get the funds. And HUD's program years actually begin in October, was it September? It's October, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So it begins in October. But then the money actually comes the next year. So in all likelihood, it will be 2024 before we actually are back in control of our own HUD dollars.
Okay. And my last question is just a statement, just making sure, Ms. Debra, that y'all do y'all due diligence about contractors, because there are a lot of, I'm, I speak from experienced shade tree contractors, and in the past, there's not been what you know but who you know. And so I really do want to stress that I'm gonna be looking at that, asking direct questions if I see certain names on there, because of the experience that I had as a person who used them as a contractor. So I simply want to say out in the open, please do y'all due diligence to check out people. Just because you're from here don't mean you do good work. That's it.
Okay. And I assure you that we are putting steps in place to be as diligent as possible, and we're also gonna be transparent. So at any time, we welcome your questions, and we'll be happy to provide you with information.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? My final question is, and I won't hold you as to a date certain, but what's the target to bring the, the specific items for a city council consideration?
The home repair program specifically?
Yes.
I believe it will be on the agenda for not next week, but the following Tuesday. That's our plan for now. We certainly have to put together a budget amendment and those types of things. So pending any hiccups in coordinating with finance to get those accounts set up, not this come following Tuesday, but the following Tuesday will be the date that you'll see all of those.
And I'll, I'll consider that tentative. So thank you very much, and we'll communicate with the administration on the, the specifics of the date, but that just helps me have context. We're talking weeks, not months. Thank you. Here we are for the discussion. Thank you for that second special presentation. We are now at our third and final special presentation of the evening, the City of Pontiac Park Revitalization Program. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is the second aspect of the broad categories of ARPA funding that we're unveiling this quarter. And this is also extremely important because it involves investing in our parks. And as all of us know, our parks have been neglected for decades and need quite an infusion of investment in order to bring them up to the high quality that our residents deserve. And I'll turn it over to Director Borngesser to get into the details. And I'll turn it over to Director Born guesser to get into the details.
Thank you, Mayor. So like with the last presentation, you understand that we received $37.7 million in American Rescue Plan funds. The council did pass a formal resolution to approve these specific program areas. One of those program areas was park revitalization. The City of Pontiac has a new vision for a vibrant and sustainable park system, one that is a, is a safe, healthy place to recreate. And with the proposal that you have in front of you, you'll see that we're going through the site selection process. Green spaces in urban areas greatly reduce climate and health risks while improving physical and mental well-being. It really established a new level of quality of life for the Pontiac, the residents of the City of Pontiac. Robust, cities with robust park systems experience stronger economies, a decrease in crime, increased property value, and protection from impacts of urban landscapes. I went through this slide in the last presentation, so I won't be redundant, but really keep in mind that the purpose of these resources is to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19 on our community. Again, same key dates. The funding is required to be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and expended by December 31st of 2026. The administration and council did divide park improvement resources into two pots of money. I'm sorry, this is teeny tiny. The first is $4 million for neighborhood and mini parks. The second is $2 million for community parks. For the sake of this conversation today, we are only talking about the neighborhood and mini parks. I'd also like to, before we begin diving into the park site selection and some of the specifics, I'd like to just communicate that this is not the one and only final time we will commit money to Pontiac parks. And I say that because the Grants Department's job is to go out and to procure and, and pursue resources for investments in the City of Pontiac. So we will continue to do park revitalization from now until all 32 parks have been revitalized and redeveloped. If this was the last instance of park improvement conversation that we get to have, then I'm not doing my job. We previously spoke about dividing the resources up amongst the, the seven council districts. You know, upon further review, District Five does not actually have any neighborhood or mini parks in it. So there needs to be some creative conversation about how to repurpose those funds and put them into the pot of resources for community parks to perhaps invest in Galloway Lake, which is the, the crown jewel of that district, or other inventive, creative ideas that perhaps the councilmen could advise on. But at this point, we're talking about neighborhood and mini parks, which District Five does not have. You also have to consider that the size of the parks in each of the districts is different. The acreage is different. And Alex, Alex number two, from the Parks Department, can speak to some of the amenities in the parks and talk about why one park might be more advantageous over the other. So what we did is, in pursuit of site selection and, and beginning to narrow down which parks we would invest in first and when, we went through a data-driven approach to site selection. Dr. Jennifer Lucarelli from Oakland University and Kristen Wilfeng from Oakland County provided a tremendous amount of data for council members. You have this in front of you, which is a larger version of the spreadsheet up on the screen for residents and attendants. That same spreadsheet is back here, and I can provide a larger copy. It just didn't post well up on the screen here. We took a look at the district the park was in, park type, whether it's neighborhood park or mini park, ADA accessibility rating, park size, total population within one-fourth of a mile, total seniors within one-fourth of a mile, and the list goes on. We looked at total percentage and, and total population of persons with disabilities, total non-white population, population density of, of persons with disabilities, percentage of persons in, in poverty, percentages and, and total population density of individuals who are transit-dependent, proximity to public services, high access to public transit around the park, the condition of the park, and any special features. We understand that this is the most perfect version we could provide of what is kind of an imperfect conversation. We have to look at this data, understanding that there are social, emotional cues that would tie into park site selection. We know that. We know that residents who've lived in these neighborhoods and communities for their entire lives have deep commitments to any given individual park, and we did our best job to try and select which park we thought, based on the data and understanding of the social, emotional aspects of each neighborhood, might be the best selection. We then created a scoring system. You'll see that the score in the green column is the score from zero to 10, meaning that if it received a 10, it was highest scoring, and would be a park that we would want to select for revitalization. From that process, we established this list here, and this includes Art Dunlap Park, Motor in Montana, Dawson Pond, Indian Village, North Kiwanis, Cherlon Park, Baldwin Park, Art Heaton, Richardson, and Shirley and Willard. You might ask me, Alex, why is there only one park selected for District Three? We did take a look at the acreage size, understanding the larger the park, the more resources it will require. North Kiwanis Park is 26.95 acres, is the largest of our neighborhood and mini parks, and will require a tremendous amount of resources. You'll also notice, again, there is not a, a park designated for District Five. We do need to have a conversation about perhaps reinvesting some of those resources and back into the community pot so that they can be allocated to the crown jewel of parks in District Five, which is Galloway Lake. This process will happen in sort of two phases. Phase One, concept design and planning. Phase Two is really engineering, construction, and maintenance and beyond. We hope that we will get through this process fairly seamlessly, understanding that we've already brought this to subcommittee. Councilwoman Kathleen James was satisfied with what we presented, and we did do a tremendous amount of community engagement when programming the ARPA dollars, understanding that residents really wanted to see investments in our community, or in our community and neighborhood and mini parks. Following a formal council resolution and budget amendment, we will move into park site planning and some of the design phase, and then hopefully construction late summer to fall, understanding that Michigan weather will certainly put a stop to our work at some point, and we'll have to pick up in the spring. I say all of this and also want to share that we have projects in other parks that are outside of the ARPA resources. So I just want to kind of skip hop to each of them, so you have an understanding of why a park might not be on the list that you see now. Perhaps there are other investments in that park. We did also receive $150,000 from the Michigan Health Endowment Fund. Dr. Jennifer Lucarelli wrote a grant application with Pontiac Collective Impact Partnership to allocate park site planning resources to the City of Pontiac. This was successful, and this award was accepted by the city many months ago. So this will actually offset some of the costs of the planning activities related to the ARPA Park Revitalization Program. We have investments in Oakland Park, as you know, the Skate Park Project and others. We have investments from Pontiac Community Foundation and others in Matty McKinney Hatchet Park. We have a potential opportunity for funding in Hawthorne Park. We have our Clinton River Trail Pike Street Connector project, which everyone hears about often. So I'd like to stop there. Alex Eggersowski, Kristen Wilfeng, and Dr. Jennifer Lucarelli are here to answer questions as well. We understand that this is the first time you're seeing this data in this way, and we're happy to take any feedback or suggestions from you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman James, oh, excuse me, Councilwoman Rutherford with the first question?
Okay. So this is the list of the parks y'all going to repair first, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. How much is being spent on Art Dunlap?
We haven't assigned a certain amount to each park. So at the council meeting that took place in November, where council approved the park revitalization program, we did indicate that we would try and spend equal amounts in each district.
If I recall, we had an amount that we were going to spend on the mini parks. So how did that change?
The preliminary cost estimate for Art Dunlap was around $250,000. But the cost of goods and services changes lately pretty rapidly. So I would hate to commit to an amount that was really from last fall, but I, I believe that that preliminary cost estimate for that park specifically is accurate.
So is it going to go up, or is it going to go, I'm, I'm asking, I have, I have a reason to ask this question.
We've seen the cost of goods and services go up pretty rapidly over the last 12 months, I'd say.
And the data that you showed talks about the percentage of seniors that stay in that density, which is 50.4%. Is that correct? Am I reading this wrong?
You're looking at the percentage of seniors. I'm going to let Dr. Lucarelli talk about the data.
Seniors and people with disabilities, there's 50.4% of people who have disabilities that stay in that park area.
Yes.
Okay. So when are the, the details of that, that particular park going to be outlined? Because if you guys use the data to decide this park and it's 50.4%, and it's no, it's not ADA compliant at all, how are y'all going to fix that? Because it's not ADA compliant.
Right. So our, our process would be to go through the design process like we would for any community development project. So you can see kind of a rough outline of what that might look like. We'll go through preliminary conceptual planning, community engagement, concept design, site planning, and address really the needs outlined in the Parks and Rec Master Plan, but also the needs of the community. So we'll go through that full process like we would for any other project in the city, and we would welcome any feedback that you have too.
All right. My last, thank you. My last question is, does the master plan correlate with what you, with the designs that you guys show, or the parks that you guys show? There's a, there's a master plan, parks plan, am I correct? And so I want to make sure that we're, I just, I'm a little confused with how the selection of what y'all chose. Even though I love the park, I just thought you would, I just don't understand how y'all chose Motor over Matty's Park.
So Matty McKinney Hatchet Park is actually a part of a different project that's funded through Pontiac Community Foundation. There is a small gap in, in their funding, but we left that off of this list for now because we wanted to focus on, on parks that were, did not currently have any funded, funding associated with them. And then in terms of, your, your second question was...
My second question is just because of the density of the disabilities in, in that area, there's a higher level of senior percentage in that, in, in Art Dunlap than Motor. So I'm just trying to make, I, I just want to understand how y'all chose these two. Like, I got Art Dunlap, I'm cool, but the, the, the disability, the senior numbers are higher in other, in other parks. So I'm just, I'm very confused how y'all chose that park.
I would be happy to talk to you about data.
Okay.
So when you're looking at that total score column, that is the numbers in green, that is a combination of 10 different variables that can be considered. So that includes the population density of seniors, persons with disabilities, persons in poverty, transit-dependent households, and the other variables that were mentioned. And so the score from zero to 10 basically tells you like how many of those high priority variables that park met. And so as we're comparing parks within the districts, we wanted to look for which of those parks had the highest numbers and were not being invested in through other means like Matty McKinney Hatchet Park is.
President Protem Carrington?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. First, I just want to commend you guys on rolling this out. I do have a couple of questions, because I'm trying to look at some of the areas that was chosen for the sixth district. For example, I definitely know Oliver Playfield is overgrown with grass, so you can't even tell a park has ever been there at all. So I was trying to wonder why that park wasn't chosen, because there hasn't been no revitalization in that particular park since I've been here in the city, it's been 12 years. And I've actually found it by walking through the neighborhood, and I say, and somebody said, oh, this was a park. And I was like, no, that's not a park. I just thought it was just an empty vacant, vacant area. Also, Merge, Match, Burke Park, also, I, I don't think anything's been done in that park over the last 12 to 15 years as well. So I was just kind of looking at some of your statistics, and, and those definitely score lower than the ones that was chosen. But we can talk about that offline if it's, I'm just, just trying to understand how they was chosen.
Could you, perhaps?
So the higher the score, the more points are received, actually the greater need for investment in the parks. So you'll see that Art Heaton and, sorry, I'm getting a little cross-eyed from the spreadsheet. Art Heaton did score high. We did try to make decisions about acreage dedicated to each district and understanding, okay, if we're investing in one larger park with higher acreage, we might want to invest in another smaller park with a, a similar need for investment. And, you know, like I said, this is not the last time we invest in our parks. This is not the only shot we'll have at it. My intention is to procure and pursue resources to revitalize all 32 Pontiac parks.
And to that point, I want to follow up a related question. Could you, in these early stages, could the Parks Team share with us what are some basic, just like basic repairs and triage that'll be done on some of the parks that are not in the roster, that didn't make the cut? I'm grateful that you've done a data-driven determination, and I'm sure Protem is, he's always advocating for that. But part of the bigger picture is, we're, we can be kosher with using this specific programming for this specific approach, but we want to get a sense of where we at sort of broadly, since this is exciting that we finally have this opportunity to really make some progress with our parks. A lot of them have really fallen, fallen on hard times over the decades.
Yes, and that's a great point, and that is something that I have now, for those of you who have, I have not met, I'm Alex Eggersowski, I'm the new Parks Manager here. And I have been working with Al Cooley of the DPW Department. I know they have expanded their staff, and we will be expanding our Parks Maintenance Staff for a few positions as well in the near future to help with getting everything maintenance-wise back in-house instead of contracting out to other agencies. So that way, everything that's going on in our parks is under our control. So we have discussed very routinely over the past, you know, six weeks that I've been here, becoming almost, I would say robotic with our maintenance schedules to get all the parks up to par aesthetically, especially like Oliver Playfield. You know, it's a large open area with no playground structures, however, like you said, you can tell it's a park. So our goals are to, with the parks that we're going to be touching with these funds, that's great, everything else, all those other parks, we will try to do maintenance in-house as best we can until, like Alex said, we go on in the future, getting more funds to repair eventually all the parks. So some things, obviously, just basic maintenance, more trash cans, community parks, getting gates on the entrances so people can't come in after hours doing, you know, the unauthorized dumpings or driving off the roadways, tearing up our lawns and stuff like that. So just for like the basic needs, we are developing a maintenance crew and a maintenance schedule to help have routine visits to all the parks to get everything aesthetically pleasing again, as we go forth with larger construction and revitalizing, revitalizing, excuse me, I am losing my voice, of all the amenities at our parks right now.
Yeah, and to that point, for the seventh district on the east side, Steed Park, which is located at South Jesse and Elm, that is very, very challenged. It's very small, but also has been highly neglected for a very long time. And I recognize that the population density doesn't necessarily warrant perhaps the higher investment, but it would make me feel more at ease or even be really receptive with using what we have in the city council budget for a district project where we can help reinforce, because it's, it can be more tactical and smaller enhancements, just because it's been so neglected for so long. It's, it's one that's, the need is very acute for Steed Park, and it, it kind of is in that territory of almost like a ghost park, where there are some vestiges of park-like activities. And I'm grateful for the, the work that the overextended Public Works Team has been able to do in absence of a Parks Team, but I'm grateful that we'll be able to be very intentional and, and proactive with the, the parks, and Steed Park is top of mind when it comes to me, even though it's what you've designated a mini park with understandable cause, that it, it needs the TLC for sure.
Yes, it does.
Other for the discussion on this special presentation, Councilman Nicholson?
I know there's a, a lot of paperwork that we're going through right now and, and imaging. I hope that we'll keep an eye open for any of the parks information. I know there's a couple of parks that are named after organizations that are still functioning, and, and it leads me to understand... me to understand, maybe there may have been an adoption program in the past. It's hard to understand why some of these parks were named for some of these organizations that may be even getting community, you know, benefit dollars from cannabis in the future. So, you know, if that is the case, I would love to see them partner with the city and continue, especially if their name is on one of these sites, to continue to keep it, you know, as vital as possible. I don't know. I know it's hard for us to find some of these documents, and we're walking into a blank slate in a lot of ways.
Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. I did flag that for our Grants Department to try to reach out to some of these organizations because I too assume that historically, these parks were named after these organizations because those organizations took on some role in maintaining those parks. I don't know, obviously, there's still an Optimist Club here in the community, there's still a Rotary Club. I'm not sure that there's still a Kiwanis Club.
There is.
There is. Okay.
And their new president is a District Seven resident.
There you go.
Councilman Goodman?
Personally, I just want to say thank you. I will speak for the park that's in my district. Dr. Borngesser personally came out with me to walk through that park and help figure out, you know, a lot of my issues and concerns with, you know, trying to revitalize 20, essentially 27 acres that has, is arguably shouldn't be considered a neighborhood park, but I digress from that statement. I am very happy. I'm very happy to see something very happening with that park. It is extremely close to my house. It is very much within the community. And, I mean, also tied to that Cherry Lawn Park being just outside of my district, being in my colleagues, Ms. James. But I, both these parks are very important population-wise in my district. I mean, you can look on there and see how many people are just within the area of those parks themselves. I just truly want to say thank you because you followed through on a thing that we, that I was very passionate about. You saw that, you helped out, and I, thank you.
Further discussion, Councilman Rutherford?
So, Ms. Borngesser, first of all, thanks a lot for choosing my favorite park, our Dunlap. I had to act like I wasn't enthused when, you know, I'm so excited because that is a neighborhood crown jewel that has been neglected for years. And the only thing I'm asking is that when we do the outreach is that we reach out to the whole community because there are things that they absolutely want there in that park, making sure they can do fitness, making sure it's accessible for people who have issues with their physical disabilities. And so I just employ y'all when you guys do the outreach, that you reach out to the whole, you know, important side, which is called the south side. That's all I got. Thanks.
Further discussion. Hearing no further discussion, I'll ask the final same question. Are you thinking a matter of weeks in which you can have explicit items you'd like to have council consideration with, or is it more months?
Yes, the same schedule as the home repair program. What I'm going to try and do throughout the remainder of the year is present these to council in clusters. When we're talking about American Rescue Plan, it kind of keeps us on the topic. So you'll see the park revitalization program, budget amendments, and formal council resolution come before you, not the next Tuesday, but the following Tuesday at the same time as the home repair program. And then in the following quarter, you'll see each block of programming be presented to you in the same cluster style.
Very good. Thank you very much for you and your team's work and for those allies from Oakland University, Oakland County, for being here this evening as well to help present. With that, we are now at agenda, excuse me, recognition of elected officials. I don't see any current elected officials in our community that wish to be recognized. So we're now at agenda address. President Protem Carrington, are there any requests this evening?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Norman Eland. Ms. Chris Eland.
The button to the right will do it. At the bottom, there's two buttons. If you hit the right one, it'll come alive. Got it?
There. Okay. Just right away left. Okay. All right. This council and mayor, along with the former Pontiac City Council, are going to make history, I feel. Why? Because they are the first that actually, in words, made a commitment and stood by their word to include the citizens of Pontiac as participants. City of Pontiac, we collectively made the right decision in continuing with the, with our city council, with this city council and mayor, who will give us access to participate in our city. Give yourselves a hand, City of Pontiac residents. And whatever is necessary to stay, you can count on us in fulfilling our obligations. Yes, our City of Pontiac and mayor, thank you again for keeping your word because, as my parents taught me, your word is not an imitation of yourself, it is you. You know, we've never said point-blank, do not go to the downtown area. So why are some, some, seeking the area downtown saying, don't include us? It's enough room for all of us, especially for those who are invited and welcomed, that is the City of Pontiac residences, to sit down at the table. And it's wrong for the gentleman last Tuesday evening to tell us, Pontiac residences, to go and sell our place to someone else. He actually, in those exact words, he said, let them go sell their place to someone else. And he told the city council, your directive was not to include the south end of Woodward, but to stay in the downtown area. Now, I know he'll probably try to walk those words back.
That does conclude your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eland. Mr. Quincy Stewart?
I don't believe she left the mic hot because I don't know how to operate this thing. Yeah, she did. Thank you. Hot mic can be dangerous, but in this case, it's all right, as most politicians in DC. Anyway, I want to talk about 27, item number 27. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that Damani Phillips, my good friend and partner in crime and jazz, will be at the, at Oak University on March the 24th at 12:00 noon. It's a free concert, and he's going to be playing with the Oak University faculty jazz band. And they are very, 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 very good. They're all professors and so, which Damani is, too. So I would encourage everybody to come out. It would be great to fill up Verner Hall with Pontiac people to come out and support, like you guys did at our concert. It was just wonderful what you guys, when you came out and supported us on, in December. So I'm making a plug for my brother, and I hope that we will all come out and support. And I'll be back for the next council meeting, too, to remind you. It's at 12:00 noon and it's free. And so being an Oak University alumni myself, I just would be thrilled to see all of us there to support him, as well as on Tuesdays at the Platt on March 21st, April 18th, and May 16th. It's a free jam session, again, sponsored by Oak University, trying to establish a relationship between Oak University and Pontiac, which is long, long overdue. So with that, thank you. And also, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming to my birthday party.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Dr. Deidre Waterman?
As part of the, excuse me, as part of this, part of the special presentation, I was had, happy to hear our Grants Department, is talking about finally how to use that ARP money that we've worked so hard to get for the city for what it was intended, for COVID relief for citizens and for businesses. There was one thing they said about the ARP money for a home repair. It, and I know this for a fact, that the home repair, unlike CDBG money, under ARP, does not have to be income limited. So I'd like them to check that because they said they were only going to give the home repair funds for 80% of median income. That cuts out a lot of people. And it was intended when we got that money, and I know very hard because I wrote the letters to make sure Pontiac got its full share of that, that it's available to anybody, any resident. It's not limited by income as is the CDBG or the HUD funds. So do make that distinction because we don't need to cut out people. This was meant for COVID relief for anybody in Pontiac, and everybody in Pontiac was affected in some way by COVID. It was also meant for neighborhood restabilization. So those are the tranches that that money can be used for. I'm also keeping an eye on that $10 million from ARP money that you put in the normal budget, because that $10 million, if you use that for ARP for COVID relief for citizens and businesses, that's a lot more money to work for. Excuse me. The other thing I just want to speak briefly to was the agenda item you're voting on in terms of the Planning Commission bylaws. There was a lot of confusion last week in this sort of discussion in terms of whether you needed to change the bylaws in accordance with state law. But when I listened to the city attorney, he said, well, that's optional, whether you have the citi, whether you have non-residents on, or no one non-resident on the Planning Commission. So I know you've asked those questions. I just brought that up because it's already in compliance. It's just a matter of who has the option of doing it, the council or the mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. Mr. Carlton Jones?
Good evening. I want to just say thank you. Very proud when we had this recent storm to see that our city was being serviced by the City of Pontiac with salt trucks. It really was a great impact. So I'm going to compliment the mayor's team and the city council because I got a lot of positive response from that. But for agenda items, the things I want to be able to talk about tonight is for us to make sure that we are truly trying to have our boards, like our Planning Commission Board and our zoning board, have a high level of integrity. Now, some of us know that we know that the mayor can appoint people to these boards, but then the council should be affirming them. And as we bring new people onto these boards, which these boards now are becoming very, very important for what we do as our city grows. And it's going to be real important that we have people with high integrity to making sure that they're making sound decisions based upon what we need here in our city. So as we start filling these seats, sometimes it's a little dicey when you have somebody brand new who come to the table, don't know some issues that we've been dealing with for maybe two, three, four years, and then they're in a vital seat. So the integrity of people we put on these boards is going to be something we need to be making sure we do our best. Councilman Parker, I want to say thank you for comments towards the TDC and what we're doing with workforce development. As soon as we can get things incorporated with, we have had conversation with the mayor about supporting how we can be in power with workforce development, he says, thus coming. But the earlier the better we can get engaged with any of these programs. And Ms. Younger, I've had some communication with her, so I'm feeling confident that we're going to be moving in the right direction of how we can be doing everything we can to incorporate Pontiac people into this process early on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Chubb Johnson?
I'm not here.
Mr. Larry Jasper, what agenda item?
Good job, Jones.
I know that you guys are going to be talking about the marijuana ordinance, and I just want to make sure that you've done, that you consider the things we've talked about, about generating additional income. Remember, those marijuana licenses are going to be doing all kinds of different growing processes. They're going to be making multimillion dollars. And that's, you need to have somehow that being contributed back to the city and the Pontiac. When you talked last week, I believe it was going to be voted on this week, that you're going to take out the emergency clauses with the emergency executive that took over the city. Everyone seems to blame the emergency manager, but understand it wasn't the emergency manager that did all the bad deeds. It was the corrupt politicians that did all the bad deeds. The mayor in between 2000 and 2008 had a handshake deal with an Italian stallion. I was there in Circuit Court when they were denying him $15 million to buy the Silverdome. That came from the governor's friend that ended up buying it for $586,000. That's one of your assets that went poof. Bloomfield Park ended up with 35-year tax abatement. What's that mean? They have 350 condominiums, there are, I'm sorry, apartments are running out for 1,400 plus a month. Think about the revenue, and you just increased taxes on the citizens. You ask them to pay more during a hyperinflation than taxing them. That was done by the mayor here, the ex-mayor. Why did she do that? Because there are hiding corrupt applications going on. The 425 agreement would have brought two, $200 million, oh, $20 million to the city in tax base. Bloomfield Township gave away their property on telegraph to Pontiac to make that happen. That's because they wanted to get rid of the legal work. I was there. So if you have 350 apartments at $1,400 a month, what is that tax revenue to the city? Zero. You also have to consider, so if you're going to take out the emergency manager and you don't have a backstop, what happens? Get rid of the immunity for politicians in Pontiac. Put it in your charter.
That concludes your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jasper. President McGinnis, that concludes agenda address.
All right. We are at number four on the agenda, adoption of the City of Pontiac adult-use marijuana business ordinance postponed from the previous week's city council meeting. I want to make sure the community is aware that there is a public hearing regarding the zoning amendment ordinance proposal that the administration has put forth. And so that is happening tomorrow, Wednesday, March 1st, 6 o'clock PM here in the city council chambers. So it is not specifically with the business ordinance, but it very directly impacts that. So I want to make sure that community members that wish to weigh in, that that public hearing opportunity is available to you. Council members previously have expressed an interest in seeing the business ordinance postponed until the zoning ordinance is actively before us from the recommendation from the Planning Commission. So is there a motion to postpone this reading?
Moved by Carrington.
For one week. So it's been moved by President Protem Carrington and seconded by Councilman Goodman that this reading be postponed to the next regular meeting of the Pontiac City Council, which should be Tuesday, March 7, 2023. Any discussion on the motion to postpone for one week? Hearing no discussion, roll call on adoption of the motion to postpone to the next regular city council meeting. This item, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Epstein.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Five yeas, one abstention.
That motion carries. It'll be back before us at the next regular city council meeting next week. We're at number five now, an ordinance amendment to ordinance 2-372 clarifying the Planning Commission bylaws. This was something that we reviewed two weeks ago, last week, and now it is before us again. Administration, you have the floor for any additional information and rationale you'd like to provide.
Yeah, thank you, President McGinnis. I do want to invite both our planning manager, Mark Andrick, as well as an attorney from the Kelly Firm, Brittany Ellis, to the podium to walk through the lay of the land here and the options. I do want to emphasize, just in response to one of the public comments, that regardless of where council lands on some of these issues, the process in terms of how planning commissioners will be chosen will remain the same, which is that the mayor nominates and council has to approve or ratify. And we'll always have the option, of course, not to ratify or approve any specific nominee. And last week, we had Dan Kelly from the Kelly Firm. I think Brittany must have drawn the short straw tonight because she, she's here instead of Dan. But take it away.
So good evening, members of council, mayor. This ordinance updates, we took your feedback from the council meeting two weeks ago and removed the emergency manager references that are in here. In addition, we removed the term limit that expired Planning Commission members on June 30, 2011. Now, the term limit is still in there for three years. It's listed elsewhere in the ordinance. But, and the other item is that we have kept the non-resident function as a part of the Planning Commission makeup. It does come from the state, from the state's Planning Enabling Act. And part of the rationale behind that is because every community in this state has business owners, property owners, and community members that may not business owners, property owners, and community members that may not be residents of the city. And it gives the cities options to fill interested parties to be a part of the Planning Commission process. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take it, or Brittany would be happy to take it. Thank you.
President Pro Tem Carrington?
Thank you, President McGinnis. Thank you for actually, like, as you said, you said it gives the city options to have the non-resident, but the law doesn't specify that you have to have a non-resident on the Planning Commission. Am I correct?
The language of, the exact language of the law is one member of the Planning Commission may be a non-resident.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Further discussion? I would like to make an amendment. There is, in 2-372 composition terms, letter F. The final sentence reads, "A member will hold the position until a successor is appointed, comma, although the mayor or the emergency manager, comma, shall nominate an appointee three months prior." My motion is to amend so that it reads, "Although the mayor shall nominate an appointee," striking "or the emergency manager," comma. Again, the following page. Just making sure that that's the only one. Yep, so the following page is, it shows that same text. So it's just that one minor amendment. It's just a final clarifying language that we are not codifying references to the emergency manager. Is there a second? It's been moved by McGinnis, seconded by Nicholson, that we amend the ordinance change to strike that phrase, "or the emergency manager," comma, in subsection F. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call on adoption of that specific amendment, just that striking of that phrase before we get to the main matter at hand. Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The proposal before us is amended accordingly. Now we're back to the main ordinance change before us as amended. Any further discussion on the main motion? Pros, cons, questions or clarifications? This is our third time taking a bite at the apple. Councilman Rutherford?
So if we vote yes, that means that anybody can, the mayor can appoint someone who doesn't live in the city to stay on the board if he so chooses. Correct.
Correct. Right now, it's muddled. There's parts that say yes and parts that imply no. So the, this would make it clear, the answer is yes. One may, just one may, and that's what the state law provides. So a yes means one non-resident may serve on the Planning Commission. Mayor Grimal?
Yeah, just to emphasize, though, that is subject to council approval. So if council were to decide, well, we don't want a non-resident on it, council could vote no on that nominated appointment.
Other discussion? Councilman Rutherford?
Just to clarify, I asked it because I wanted to make sure, oh, is it on? Did you put, is it on there?
Your light's on, but.
It's broke. It's probably broke.
No, it's just everyone's.
I'll just turn mine off.
My, it's still working. Yes, then I was. They're all down, though.
Okay. Just have to use somebody else's mic temporarily.
You could potentially try the veteran microphone. Well, the McGinnis mic is still on, so let's do it. Maury Povich up in here, Phil Donahue, what's your guy?
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much, Rio Mike. I only ask because I want to make sure I'm voting the right way. It wasn't a dig, so I just want to make, because I don't feel like going back and forth with this. I just want to know what it is, because y'all always take everything as a dig. I simply wanted to know, was it a yes or a no? Okay? Everybody calm down on the administration side. I ain't on that yet. Thank you. Go ahead.
The clerk reminds us that we still want to do a move on the actual second reading for consideration. So is there a motion to adopt an ordinance amendment to ordinance 2-372 clarifying the Planning Commission bylaws? It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman, so that second reading and that consideration for adoption is before us. And to make it neat and tidy, I'm going to do the amendment change that I did, striking "or the emergency manager," comma, in subsection F, one more time. Moved by McGinnis, seconded by Nicholson. Any discussion on that, striking of the phrase "or the emergency manager," comma, in subsection F? Voting on that again. Amplify your voice to the gods. Clerk Doyle?
Yes.
Carrington votes yes.
Yes.
Goodman votes yes. McGinnis votes yes.
Yes.
He votes yes. Nicholson? Parker votes yes.
I guess, yes.
Rutherford votes yes. All right, that specific proposal passes, striking that phrase. Now we're at the main motion. Further discussion on that ordinance amendment for the Planning Commission bylaws clarification update? Hearing no further discussion, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. The ordinance amendment is adopted. That vote was six zero, all those members present voting in the affirmative. That having passed? We can, well, we can hear you, but it's not being recorded or amplified.
All right. Now I think it's working. There's also a motion in your packet to approve the changes to the bylaws as well for the Planning Commission, which are identical to the ordinance amendments.
So you would like a second motion, not just in the ordinance change, it's specific to the bylaws? All right. Could I please have a motion to suspend the rules and provide for a resolution amending the Planning Commission bylaws to be considered now?
Suspend the rules? Make the motion?
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. We need to suspend the rules because that was not explicitly identified as a separate motion on the agenda. So if we vote yes on this motion, it allows us to do a complimentary action that just specifically changes the Planning Commission bylaws.
Okay.
So the motion is before us, suspending the rules, allowing us to do that now. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules?
Just for clarity, President McGinnis, so with this motion, if we vote yes, that means that the Planning Commission bylaws is officially changed?
Not yet. If we vote yes, it allows us to even consider that.
Okay, got you. All right, just wanted to make sure.
All right, Clerk Doyle, on the motion to suspend the rules so that we can consider the Planning Commission bylaws right now?
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
All right, that motion carries. All right, so we're now considering it now, and I'm writing a resolution on the fly. I know I've got a motion before us, but we act through resolutions. So.
Point of privilege.
Yeah.
So why can't we just wait a week to vote if we don't have a resolution on the floor?
Because I'm trying to maximize our time here.
Cool.
I move that we adopt a city council resolution that reads, be it hereby resolved, the Pontiac City Council hereby approves the proposed amendments to section 2-372 of the City of Pontiac's Planning Commission bylaws presented to the city council on February 28th, 2023, with the phrase "or emergency manager," comma, stricken from subsection F. Is there a second to my resolution?
A second.
All right. So it's been moved by McGinnis, seconded by Rutherford, that we consider a resolution approving the updated bylaws for the Planning Commission. This is practically just implementing the ordinance changes that we've just made. Deputy Mayor Stevens?
That was, does that motion work?
That motion works.
Hearing no further discussion, the resolution that implements the ordinance that has just been amended is before us for the Planning Commission bylaws. Are you comfortable, Clerk Doyle? All right, Clerk Doyle, roll call on the motion.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Thank you for flagging that, Manager Yandrick. We are now at number six, an ordinance to amend Appendix B of the Pontiac, the Municipal Code of the City of Pontiac, amending Article II, Section 2.103 zoning map to change the zoning classifications for specific parcels on Woodward Avenue, ZMA 22-011 for Lighthouse of Oakland County at 46156 Woodward Avenue. We moved and seconded the first reading of that two weeks ago, so I need a motion.
I make the motion.
And is there a second? It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford and seconded by Councilman Parker to adopt an ordinance to amend as stated regarding 46156 Woodward Avenue, which is ZMA 22-011. That item is now before us. Mayor Grimal?
Thank you, President McGinnis. As we discussed last week, we thought that it made sense to postpone the item so that we could put some safeguards in place, making the rezoning conditional on Lighthouse continuing to own the property and operate it as they've indicated they intend to, because I think all of us have a lot of trust and faith in Lighthouse, but less potentially in some future unknown owner. And Lighthouse is amenable to having that conversation. However, we weren't able to have that conversation because Todd Burke, who is the chief real estate officer for Lighthouse, has been out of town. So he's coming back this week, and we have a meeting scheduled, but we haven't actually had that conversation yet.
So would you request a postponement for another week?
That would be my request, yes.
Is that enough?
Mr. Andrick, you are a little closer to the specific scheduling timeline here. So does, is that enough, or do you think we need another two weeks?
Our meeting is scheduled for next Monday with the mayor and with the Lighthouse team, so I would recommend, just in order to give enough time for our council packet, that the following week on, what would that be, March 14th, I believe, I think that would be ready.
So point of privilege, I believe it needs to be two weeks because I talked to Ms. Shannon Smith, and I also talked to Todd before he left, and they need adequate time. And we want to make sure this is done right so that it's a smooth transition. So I'm requesting that it's not one week, but two weeks, and also that I am available to be at that meeting when y'all do meet with them, because it's in my district. Thank you so much.
So it's been moved by Councilman Rutherford to postpone for two weeks to the March 14th?
Yes.
City council meeting seconded by Councilman Goodman. So right now before us is the motion to postpone this item. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the motion to postpone to the March 14th, 2023 city council meeting. Clerk Doyle?
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
The motion carries. We'll see it on our agendas again on March 14th. We're at number seven now, the Pontiac City Council Resolution Demanding Accountability by DTE Energy for Pontiac Residents. Councilman Goodman, do you move the resolution?
So I'm moved.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. Councilman Goodman, would you like to read the resolution?
Absolutely. Actually, I also like to make a language amendment.
Okay.
Do I do, do I do that now, or?
Make a motion to amend.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, whereas in the fifth whereas, just for the sake of reading and making it a little bit easier to understand what's being said, I like to add in the three words, what should be, between the words providing and continuous. That way it should read, whereas DTE Energy has a history of unreliability in providing what should be continuous quality service to residents.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend the language there by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. This is adding the phrase what should be between the words providing and continuous in the fifth whereas. Any discussion on that particular amendment, specifically inserting that phrase? Hearing no, roll call on adoption of the amendment. Clerk Doyle?
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
All right, that motion carries. The main resolution is amended. Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
Whereas the most recent ice storm that affected the Gallic region left 1 million residents without power, of that, 800,000 were in the state of Michigan. And whereas, as of Monday, February 27th, 93,000 homes in Michigan had been without power for five days. And whereas, by comparison, the state of Illinois had about 12,000 customer outages, while the states of Wisconsin, Indiana, and Ohio combined had fewer than 3,000 outages. And whereas, the state of Minnesota received 21 inches of snow during that storm, and that state had a grand total of nine household outages. And whereas, DTE Energy has a history of unreliability in providing what should be continuous quality service to residents throughout our region, highlighting the blackouts of 2017, 2019, and 2021, and last Wednesday's ice storm, all of which resulted in upwards of 800,000 residents losing power. And whereas, Utility Watchdog Group Citizens Utility Board ranked DTE as one of the least reliable utilities in the nation. And whereas, over the last decade, DTE Energy and Consumers Energy have increased residents' costs by 50%, while costs for industrial customers remain flat, causing Michiganers to pay some of the nation's highest rates for subpar services. And whereas, on Thursday, February 23rd, 2023, as tens of thousands of its customers were shivering in the dark, DTE Energy held its fourth quarter earnings call where it was celebrated that the company made a profit of over $1.1 billion for the year. And whereas, DTE Energy is asking for another rate hike that will give them over $600 million in new revenues off of the backs of working-class Pontiac and Michigan residents. And whereas, investigative media reports have found DTE Energy shut off service to tens of thousands of customers while receiving hundreds of millions in COVID relief dollars from the federal government. And whereas, DTE Energy has exponentially more outages by ratio when compared to areas of the state that rely on a form of municipal public utility, such as the Lansing Board of Water and Light and the Holland Board of Public Works. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Pontiac City Council supports the reintroduction of House Bills 6043 through 6047, which would set a formula for utility companies to reimburse customers for service interruptions, require utility companies to give compensation to consumers for repeated outages, and steeply is that the credits must come from company profits and cannot be charged back to ratepayers. And further resolved, the Pontiac City Council pledges our support for the call of a state-level investigatory committee hearings on these outages and explore the extent of DTE's political lobbying. And further resolved, the Pontiac City Council pledges our support for the call to have the state legislator commission a study on the reliability and outages of DTE Energy versus other Michigan public utilities and utilities across the country. And further resolved, the Pontiac City Council calls on the state legislator to start a committee researching the feasibility of a democratically accountable state-run utility in Michigan. Pontiac City Council, February 28th.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman, anything further you'd like to elaborate on?
Just the fact of, the fact we, year after year after year, watch our families have to throw out food, have to get hotels, have to sweat in their living rooms to simply just survive. We've watched people have to sit in the cold with their pets. My grandma currently does not have a functioning source of heat in her house. And so to not have electricity at any point over these past couple of days, is absolutely ridiculous. And the fact that we have to go through this constantly with the really monopoly of a corporation that we only have one option to have, this is ridiculous. This is truly beyond ridiculous. And the fact that a city like Pontiac, two cities like Oxford and Birmingham, where we have to go through and watch, again, hundreds of thousands of people not have power for days on end. not have power for days on end, is ridiculous. And as one of the largest cities in Pa- in Oakland County, I think it's very important for us to say, stop.
Councilman Nicholson?
I don't know that we've had such a clear and obvious resolution on our hands. I mean, the, the, the information that is here is just mind-blowing when we're standing on record profits. They're about to increase their, their rates again. And the recourse, you know, a lot of times I've called on behalf of residents when the last big outage in Stonegate was out for, for over a week. They sent in their, their request for credit for their bills, and they had it down to the time of the outage. Well, had it been 27 minutes more, you would have been in the next bracket. So here's a check for 20 bucks. Or you didn't get a check at all because your, your last bill was three days late. You know, the, the, it's, it's mind-blowing. It's really mind-blowing, and it's, it's past due, and I'm glad that we have a majority in our legislature that can finally potentially do something about this, and I hope they do.
So in addition to all of Pontiac, you're voting an emphatic yes for Stonegate?
On behalf of Stonegate, and, and, and Pioneer Highlands has been spotty in and out. You know, they, a majority still have power, but, you know, it's shaky. And, and for the explanation to be, well, there's ice on the lines. Well, if the ice can bring down the line, the line was not secured properly. The line was not updated, you know, in however long, you know? And I know the city is having to deal with, you know, years and years and years of abated maintenance on, on our secondary lines, you know? So, you know, it's, it's, it's time for this to change. And we saw in the areas in the city where the power lines are buried, there were no outages at all, you know? So in, in this case, you know, it, this needs to happen. Where I don't want to continue to take the answer of, we'll come back through and really make, do a good job trimming trees this year. It wasn't, majority wasn't tree limbs falling on lines. It was just the weight of, of ice on the line. It's just, it's, it's past due.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford?
So I'm going to deal with District One in the South Side, who just got their power yesterday. You have a large amount of seniors who have no food to eat for this week because their food all spoiled. What are we as a city going to do about it? Because it's all good to call out DTE, but we as a city need to do better immediately. We have people who don't have their oxygen tanks right now because their power is still not on. The question is very simple. What are we as a city going to do about it? Because what I found was, was most appalling was that other districts and other cities had their schools open during a power outage, and none of our schools are open. And the excuse is going to be is because we were on a break. But isn't it funny that other areas were on a break, but they still opened up their schools so that people could be warm during the days that it was off? Just a suggestion, I called and I told y'all that. Isn't it funny that if people like Carrington and Mike McGinnis and the, and this administration wouldn't have came up with a plan, that thousands of our community members would have not had any power or water for the weekend because we kept the Bowen Center and the Ruth Peterson Center open? And so as we're voting for Brenda Carter, and we're voting for Jeremy Moss, and we're voting for Haley Stevens, we need to start asking them to put their money where their mouth is to these big companies, because they get thousands of dollars from these big companies every time they ask for it. And yet, no one is talking about how these people are going to survive, pay their bills, come out of debt, and be able to function. Because if you multiply how much it costs a night to live at the Embassy Suites, I know because I was there, it was $200 a night, $200 times four is $800. You multiply the food, it was $450. You multiply the gas, it was $150. Here's the point to all of this. It affected all of us. And so this administration has to start calling people out because you have their numbers. You really do. And it's not picking on you, it's just being 100 with you. Every other, every other community I saw put, got together and worked to have warming centers for their city. Why isn't that happening here unless it is a tragedy? Because every time something happens, the people who are affected the most are the seniors and the kids. And so I'm calling upon us as a whole, the administration and the council, that when this happens, we have a plan in place immediately. Because we can blame DTE all we want, but we as a city have to start taking care of our own. That's it.
Further discussion? Councilman Goodman?
And to, to further go on, something that my colleague said, there, there is a key part in here to talk about DTE's lobbying, right? Because like, it's a very clear fact that 93% of the previous state legislator took money from DTE in some form. So to recognize that this is not simply a partisan issue. This is an issue of money and of corporate influence. But separate from that, I do want to also talk about how like, this, this is not just some issue that is, that is beyond us. We have a government that is entire job is to, supposed to fight for us and to regulate these people with money that buys them power and influence. Like, for example, one of the bills that is, that is possible to, to help make this a, a much more fair fight for those of us who pay utilities. The, the bill from one of the majority, well, the majority floor leader would make it to where, from hours one to five, DT and other, and consumers would have to pay you $7 an hour per outage. After five hours, it goes to $10 an hour. After 12 hours, it goes to 12. After 24 hours, it goes to 15. After 48 hours, it goes to 18. After 72 hours, it goes to $25 an hour. That is a lot of money that would, one, force them to be able to realize, hey, maybe we shouldn't be down for five days. Because after that amount of time, that's over $1,000 per resident. But it's also a very fair thing, the fact that residents are having to sit here and, like my godmother, drive from Martha King Boulevard all the way to a hotel in Warren to be able to have heat and to have lights. That's not cheap, especially when hotels are also price gouging any person that needs to be able to find somewhere to go. And we should be making the corporations, who are literally hand over fist, be able to swim and honestly burn money to keep themselves warm, while the rest of us have to sit here and, again, throw out groceries, possibly even lose loved ones, be, like, be medically in danger. We have options. We have options. There, there are bills that can do things. We have organizations and governmental bodies to do this work. But not only that, these corporations are not faceless. They are not phone numberless. They are not addressless. These are people who spend hundreds upon, hundreds of thousands of, not millions of dollars to sit here and make sure that all they have to do after five days of a power outage is give a resident $25 if the resident requests it. And I mean that literally, that is how that works. That should not be the case. $25 does not cover anything in, in the span of a five-day outage, where, again, as of yesterday, 93,000 people were still without power. That also includes heat. The, we, we, again, we are not without solutions. The, the issue is, is that the people who can do them are not. And that is the problem.
Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Brother President. I'm certainly in agreement with the resolution, because I think it was very well-written. But my question would be, now that we've voted, we are voting to approve this resolution, who's going to make sure that it gets in the hands of the state legislator so it can be acted upon?
I'll do it myself.
Second thing is, as we talk about the, the resolution, there's certainly some things that, and I think me and the mayor would begin a discussion with it in regards to, what can we do in regards to power outage such as this? Because they're certainly going to continue, because we have an old infrastructure. And we can't keep blaming the old infrastructure for our lack of response to the issues when they happen. So I think there are some things that we should do. We have some businesses that can open up. You know, we may not be able to provide a nice, comfortable pallet or blanket or mat for you to lay on, but we can certainly give you a chair to sit in and coffee to keep you warm. There's businesses that should be able to support that, at least for our senior citizens in this city. And so as we, as we pass resolutions, that's great. But what are we doing to say, when this happens again, this is what we can do as a city to provide support and to our citizens who are desperately in need of it? Because we know that a lot of them out there don't have the method or the means to provide support for themselves.
Councilman Rutherford?
One more thing, we talked about businesses. But we can also, we need to include a partnership administration with the churches. You know, there's a lot of churches over here could have opened, you know? Could have been called. I'm no, I know y'all was open, baby. You ain't got, I know y'all was open. I, I'm not talking about you. But I just want to point that out too. There's a lot of churches who get a lot of, you know, ties and offering, who could have been open. That's just a suggestion. I'm done.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, the motion before us is adoption of the resolution demanding accountability by DTE Energy. Let me give you the right title. Pontiac City Council Resolution Demanding Accountability by DTE Energy for Pontiac Residents. Roll call and adoption of the resolution, Clerk Doyle?
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to post the notice of a budget amendment for Department of Public Works Engineering Services in the amount of $360,000?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. This is a, a budget, this is allowing the clerk to post the notice. So it'll be back before us in two weeks. Just to make it very clear, it increases the appropriation in the General Ledger Account 101447806 Engineering Services. Increases that by $360,000, but then decreases the amounts of the line items for 101447-702 Salaries and Wages. That's reduced by 200,000. 715 FICA City Contribution Reduced by 15,300. 718.500 MERS Employer Contribution Reduced by 10,000. And then 716, the Medical Insurance Reduced by 15,000. So I just want to give people the context that while 360,000 is the increase, that there is also, it's being offset by some decreasing as well. Mayor Grimal, administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Mayor Stevens to walk through the dynamics here. But the, the short answer is, this is a combination of both the fact that we have more engineering activity than we initially anticipated, but we also have had a tougher time bringing engineering staff in-house, which is what the original budget that was approved back in June envisioned. And we anticipated that bringing engineering staff in-house would save some significant funds. But with that, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So counsel, as the mayor stated, this is a result of the fact that we have not been able to bring on engineering staff. Partially, I, I would say that this represents some positive news from the city. The fact that we are using, utilizing so much engineering activities means that we are busy at work. One of the things, and this won't come up for real discussion for a couple of months now, but one of the things that I'm happy to announce is that over the course of the past year, we've had over $38 million of new investment in the city. And that's just taking the five biggest projects that happened. So all of that requires a lot of work on our end to make it possible. And so we have been really relying on outside engineers to, to get that work done. So as the council president pointed out, $200,000 and some change is being redistributed from the salary lines. And I say the salary lines because it's the salary and then all of the benefits that go along with it, like FICA. But I do want to be clear that an additional $119,700 is being appropriate, is being requested to be appropriated from fund balance in order to carry this through. And Al, this does then, we believe, bring us all the way through June, correct?
Button to the right, on the bottom. There might be too many microphones turned on. Yep, there you go.
Okay. Yeah, that is correct. I took the averages of what we were spending over the last several months and, and equal that out over the months that are left here, this budget season. And, and we're anticipating this should be, this should carry us to June 30th.
Any further discussion? Again, this is authorized and the clerk to publish, publish the notice. It'll be back before us in two weeks. Councilman Nicholson?
When we are in firmer financial, and I mean staffing, finance department staffing, it would be cool to model some of these consultative services just based on the, the total number of staff that would, it would require to outweigh. And, you know, when we start to hit that and, and just keep, keep record of that so the Finance and Personnel Committee can continue to make recommendations for salary increases for, for open positions. Because clearly, you know, these larger dollar amounts will not, you know, they're not going down, they're only going to go up. But if we can, you know, make a, make that statement and have that data, I think if we ever were to be able to say, hey, city, we need $200,000 for this role and that role and this role annual salaries, it'll start to really make sense, because that's, you know, where we're seeing some of these wild consultative salaries coming in. I mean, but that's what you make when you do this kind of work, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. Roll call and adoption of the resolution authorizing the city clerk to post the notice of the budget amendment for Department of Public Works Engineering Services in the amount of $360,000. And that'll be before us in two weeks' time. Roll call, Clerk Doyle?
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted, and the clerk is hereby authorized to post that notice. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the appointment of Alan Cooley III as Department of Public Works Director?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. So the, the resolution's now before us. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We are really honored to finally bring this forward. As I think counsel is aware, and I, as many members of the public have observed, the DPW operations have really improved substantially over the course of the past year. I think the most noteworthy way in which that's occurred has been the much-improved and very rapid response plowing snow and salting the roads during wintry weather. But Mr. Cooley has also overseen bringing in a lot of positions back in-house after emergency managers outsourced so many of those positions. And as a result, we've had additional capacity to repair park equipment and to pick up trash around the city and improve overall maintenance activities. We recognize that we still have a ways to go to really provide the top-notch service that our residents deserve. But under Mr. Cooley's leadership over the course of the past year, we've seen really meaningful and substantial improvements that we're very enthused about, and I think most of the residents in our community are also very enthused about. So it's with a lot of enthusiasm that we have proposed making Mr. Cooley the permanent DPW Director.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion, City Councilman, Mayor Rutherford?
I asked a couple of weeks ago about diversity and including, inclusion, training being done for this administration, especially in these department heads. When would that be implemented for Mr. Cooley if he's so selected?
Deputy Mayor Stevens?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Last fall, we encouraged, encouraged all of our managers to take approximately three and a half to four hours' worth of training. We are actually making that mandatory for all directors now. That training includes training on diversity, some soft leadership skills, FLSA, HIPAA laws, and, and other items that just help you be a more well-rounded manager.
So my follow-up question is, when does that start in this? So we have a lot of people we've approved for these departments. When will it start for Mr. Cooley?
So it will start for everyone. We'll need to have that, all of these trainings completed before the end of this fiscal year.
Thank you.
President Pro Tem Carrington?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I just want to ask administration, usually when it comes to department heads, a resume comes with that particular resolution. And even though I know that we all know Mr. Cooley, still, I think his protocol is that we should have a resume with the resolution for a director position here at the city of Pontiac.
Would you like to yield to Deputy Mayor Stevens? Oh, yes.
I apologize, that was an oversight. When we had originally sent this item to you, it did have the resume attached, And we had thought that the whole package had been resubmitted.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Nicholson?
I want to say thank you to, the department has, you know, as it's filled out under your, your leadership. The answering, answering of phone calls for my residents has certainly increased. Especially the sanitation department has immediate answers. And it's, sometimes it's just really refreshing to get an immediate answer rather than having to get a call back. The labor, the labors are amazing. I stop by every time they're on my streets and I roll the window down and say thank you or get to know what they're doing. And they're always friendly, they're very approachable. Can't say the same for utility companies. You know, usually they roll their windows up on me. But I just wanted to say thank you. I think that things are certainly coming along. And as we add more staff, I'm excited to see how it goes.
Councilman Parker?
Thank you.
Microphone?
Thank you, Brother President. One of the things that I'm, I'm aware of, Mr. Cooley has done a very good job in this capacity that he's been in. But my question is this. Based on when we promoted him to the temporary director spot, what has he done, knowing what the qualifications was, to prepare himself for the director spot? Other than normal work?
Would you like to answer that, Mr. Cooley?
So, just to clarify that question a little more. So you're asking what I've done to changes?
I'm asking. Microphone?
I keep forgetting. I'm asking, each job has a job description, a job requirement. You were appointed as the temporary director last year. In that period of time, having access to the job description, what have you done to prepare yourself for the upward promotion if you wanted it?
So I feel with all my experience that I had through past employment that I've met all the qualifications of this position outside of the schooling. And currently where I'm at, at a place in time with, with what my personal life is and what my work handle, you know, my workload is, I just don't currently have the time or the, the resources to go back to school and to get a college degree. But I do feel that I meet all the qualifications of this positions outside of the, what was previously in there for a bachelor's degree or a master's.
Okay. Separate and apart from degree, what have you done? Because there's some other qualifications that doesn't, that I listed that other than degree. What have you, how have you met those? If I was, and I don't have a copy of the job description handed to reference specifically, but there was other qualifications that, separate and apart from having a degree, what have you done to say, okay, I don't have this, but I've done that?
Okay, so like I'm, like I'm stating, I feel I've had a lot of prior training, a lot of prior experience within management roles that I've met all of those qualifications that it asks for. I've done a lot of research on the engineering side of things that I didn't have a lot of experience in. Attended more of the APWA, the American Public Works Association meetings to familiarize myself with that. A lot of different stuff through MDOT with understanding the bridge aspect of different things. The street administrator side of things, that's engineering. Without having the, the city engineer here, I've had to learn a lot of that role, of that position and better myself in that way.
Deputy Mayor Stevens, did you have a hand?
Yeah, so I was just going to clarify a couple of things for Councilman Parker's specific question. So when Mr. Cooley was elevated to interim director last year, at that time, we collectively were not aware of the change that the emergency manager had made to the ordinance requiring a degree. Save for the degree, Mr. Cooley's experience would have qualified him for this position.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Okay, so you stated that you have the experience. What certifications do you have? So for example, you said you took a class with MDOT. Was there a certification offered? If it was, did you take it?
So there wasn't a certification offered. It was just doing research on my own, reading up on, on the different regulations, requirements for the different things that we do within the engineering department. So it was, it was more knowledge-based than it was a certified-based. I do have certifications through Oakland County where I'm, I have several FEMA certifications for incident command, incident management. Had several supervisory training courses. I attended the Wilson Learning Center for Management. It was a six-month course. I had a certification for all of those. Certified in a bunch of areas through collection system, management of sewer, stormwater, soil erosion and sedimentation control, stormwater operator. So I have several certifications through Department of Public Works style things. Also, you know, I spent 22 years with Oakland County. They have very high regulations on training. So sexual harassment training, diversity training, you know, violence in the workplace training. So there's several trainings that I've went through over the, the course of my career that, that are in those aspects.
Okay. And so the reason why I'm asking this, and this is the administration side, this is a pay increase, correct, if we give them this?
Just a 3% one.
3%, right. So at any time, because you want him to stay and be successful, are you going to offer him programming to help him get the certification so that if he, if he take, if we allow him to take this job, that he could be certified? So that, not talking about emergency situations, I'm very familiar with FEMA, but so that he has the skill set to be successful to manage a whole department? I understand that he can handle doing the snow, no problem. I understand he can handle doing the sewers, no problem. But I'm talking about the day-to-day functions of this department. Are you guys going to put in writing, not hearsay, that if he's approved, that you're going to get him more training so that he could do his job effectively and make sure that he's able to do right by the citizens? The administration can answer it. Thank you, Al. Go ahead.
That is a great question, Councilwoman. Every employee of the city has $4,000 available to them for continued education and training.
You didn't answer my question.
So Mr. Cooley, interim director Cooley, soon-to-be director Cooley, has $4,000 available to him right now for training.
And so, Mr. Cooley, my question is very simple. If you are approved, do you have any hesitation in turning to take and do more classes so that you're better able to be in your job and be successful? Because I want you, at the end of the day, whether I agree with you or not, I want you to be successful. I know that you know that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So when I ask you this, I need to be bare brex text. They give you this job, are you going to take some classes?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's it. Go ahead. Thank you.
Other discussion? Hearing no further discussion. The motion is the resolution approving the appointment of Alan Cooley III as Department of Public Works Director. As the speaker's list is exhausted, I want to thank you for pursuing this opportunity. I want to thank you for your commitment to the city of Pontiac and working here. And I want to thank you for being tested by fire, by ice, by sludge, all sorts of things in the role as interim director of the Department of Public Works. And I, I just want to acknowledge that because in addition to your decades of your experience professionally, your years of experience mean a great deal in terms of being on the front lines here in the city hall, in the city operations for Public Works. And that greatly shapes my yes vote in favor of this resolution. Hearing no further discussion. Oh, Councilman Parker?
So if we vote to approve this process? Mike, if we vote to approve this process, is there a probationary period for it? And if so, does, does that also include some of the questions that Councilman Rutherford asked? That if the training that, that they're, he's supposed to get is not completed, at what point do we revisit that?
So we'll yield to Deputy Mayor Stevens for the personnel and human resources. Are there, is there a specific time window? The positions are at will for department director levels, so they're at-will positions. But do you have any internal structure? Mayor Grimald, you want to take that?
Yeah, the short answer is that all employees of the city are at-will. And so the concept of a probationary time period is really a concept that exists where positions are not at-will. So there's not, it's not the case that there's a formal probationary period. The way that the city charter is structured in terms of department directors is that the city council votes to approve an appointment or doesn't. Obviously, in terms of job performance, Mr. Cooley has been on the job now for a little over a year in this position and certainly has a track record that can be judged on its own accord. I will just say that in terms of the desire to see Mr. Cooley take some professional development classes, you'll have to take Mr. Cooley at his word, but also us at our word, that we'll make sure that he does so.
Councilman Rutherford?
I love word, but I love it in writing even better. Can it be put in writing? Is that a problem for this administration? I'm, I need you to get on the mic and say so that the people can hear it at home.
So, no, it is not a problem.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion before us? The motion is adoption of the resolution approving the appointment of Alan Cooley III as Department of Public Works Director. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call and adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker? Rutherford? Carrington?
No.
Four yeas, two nays.
That motion carries, per my understanding of the city charter. A simple majority is sufficient for a department director? All right. That motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Cooley, on your permanent hiring in the position of Department of Public Works Director.
Point of privilege? Just to the administration, when am I going to get that in writing? I need a deadline, date.
Tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to post notice of budget amendment for finance department accounting support professional services in the amount of $40,000?
Yes. So moved.
Support, I'm sorry.
Moved by Nicholson, seconded by Rutherford. Resolution, again, this authorizes the clerk to post the notice. It'll be back in two weeks. It's amount of $40,000 for finance department accounting support professional services. Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to turn it over to the deputy mayor, who has also been serving as our acting finance director.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. So, city council, you have been kept up to speed on the, the temporary accounting support that we have been receiving in order to get our finances in order. For the sake of everyone who's listening, who may not be aware of everything that's happened, when we had our forensic audit last year, we, we made the decision to release our finance director after that. But before that, we also had a situation where our former accounting firm had not done the work that they were supposed to do and was attempting to raise their rates on the city. That firm also, in our forensic audit, did not come out with the best light. So we had a situation where our accounting firm was not doing their job, was charged, was trying to charge the city more and did not have a good record from our forensic audit. We also had the situation where our former finance director did not have a good review from the forensic audit. We have since released both of those entities from service, but we needed accounting work. And so we hired CVHT to help us prepare for our annual audit. Not only are they doing that, but they have also, once they got all of the work together for the audit, they moved forward to say, all right, we can't, we could just leave you where you are, but if we do that at your next audit, you're going to be in the exact same situation. So they are, they got everything up to date as of June 30th. And now they're getting everything up to date, actually up to date, real time. The finance subcommittee could tell you that when we first came in to office, we were reviewing financial statements that were two and three months old. Now we are actually reviewing financial statements that are the previous month, but we still have more bank reconciliations that need to be done to bring those all the way up to date. These, this transfer of funds is bringing in enough money to finish out what CVHT has started. And also, Mr. Bawa, I believe we are also bringing, putting in enough money to bring in two temporary accountants who will actually be much less expensive than CVHT so that we can transition out and not fall behind once we let CVHT go.
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Nicholson, then Councilman Parker?
Yeah, I want to echo that. I know we've been, we had some, some difficulties, but I want to say, Deputy Mayor, you were too kind in your, in the way that you teed that up. I want, I want to make it clear that, and ask a question just for clarity because I want to make sure there's no confusion during what I'm sure is going to come in public comment. Second, so, the, the, to be very clear, the previous accounting firm, Plant Moran, did express they would continue services. That's correct, right?
That is correct.
At a much higher rate?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Because that's been said, that they walked away because they didn't want anything to do with us. I just wanted to clarify. We have that, that, that quote back from them. Now, the, also the, the forensic audit did talk about, not only was it, you know, wasn't good, but I want to make sure that we outline that there was no segregation of duties, that they did not even have access or separation of, access to or separation of basic financial controls. So we had one person who essentially could write a check, who could, who could, who could ask for a check, authorize the check, write the check, cash the check. And this, this is, this is basic GAAP accounting principles. The reason why we have, you know, an audit and why we had to have forensic audit. So where we are now is that we had to go through this entire process, relay out everything we wanted from our internal auditor because there was a question as to why the audit is not posted. We did actually have to ask for an extension to the audit because we had put in so many more responsibilities of our auditor to make sure that we were doing everything that we were supposed to do. We've hired an additional outside accounting firm who is helping us get all of that information too. We were approved on that extension of the audit. And now this is to ensure, one, we can catch up with bank reconciliations because we've been fully focused on our audit and day-to-day activities. But then, two, which, again, I've praised every single time the subcommittee report has been given, our current accounting resource because Sekar has been able to keep up and actually have moved forward. We used to look three months ago, and now we're looking at the very last month that closed. So it is revolutionary what this man has been able to do with very limited resources. And I'm excited that we're going to bring on more. And thank you to Councilwoman James for that suggestion of those additional in-house, those staff. So I just wanted to get those points clear because it hasn't been so much in the past.
Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Brother President.
Microphone?
Okay. Thank you, Brother President. But as I look at your, your resolution, your letter here, my question is, is the amount we are increasing enough? Because if I'm reading this right, it says this goes through services through February 23. And we're not going to take them, since we don't have that person in place yet. Is this going to be enough to carry it through this budget year?
That is a good point. We are cautiously optimistic that it is enough. But it is, it is not lost on me that it could probably be more. So if you would like to amend it, if you would like us to put more in there, we can. Or if, should the need arise, we would come back to you and again ask.
I'm all for getting it all when you can get it, so. I think, I don't think you got enough if it only goes through February. I think there should be some money, but I don't know exactly how much that should be. Perhaps, so maybe what we do is delay voting on this until they?
What we may want to do is authorize the clerk to publish this notice and then ask the administration to crunch the numbers on. If, if there's a more expansive number, then we amend that during the budget amendment in two weeks. So that way, the clock's still moving forward. The clerk does his two-week window. Does that sound good to you, Clerk Doyle?
Works for me.
And, and what the administration may find, the department may find that they've, they've, you know, looked at it yet again and they do find that it is more than sufficient. So it's a very apt question. And we look forward to that, that deep dive and as needed, recommendation for a more expansive amount in these relative, you know, GL accounts. We know that it's not easy to say, let's just do 45 instead because it impacts all these other GL accounts. Mr. Bawa?
Yeah, if we need more money, we can also offset it by reduction in the salaries and benefits. So the net effect will be zero.
So the net effect is zero, but we may still, in two weeks' time, we may want to do some further recalibration. So we look forward to that research and review in advance of that.
Thank you, Brother President.
Thank you for flagging that. Any further discussion? This is the motion to authorize the clerk to post notice of the budget amendment. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call and adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker? Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays?
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. The clerk is hereby authorized to post notice of that budget amendment. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the new contract agreement with Comp One for third-party administrative services? Support? It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Parker, that we adopt the resolution approving the new contract agreement with Comp One for third-party administrative services. We give the floor to the mayor administration.
Thank you, President McGuinness. As council knows, the city now has a actual workers' compensation insurance carrier, insurance company. But once upon a time, the city was self-insured when it came to workers' compensation. And this third-party administrator contract is a relic or a leftover aspect of the fact that we were once self-insured. And as someone who was self-insured, the city needs to contract with somebody to actually administer the ongoing workers' compensation benefits that need to be provided to those who are still receiving workers' compensation from their time of employment and injury with the city many years ago. There are currently four former employees who are still receiving workers' compensation benefits, and it's those four individuals who Comp One has been the third-party administer for the benefits of. We put this out in the form of an RFP, because the Comp One existing contract is coming to an end this week. So, we put it out for an RFP to see if we might get a better offer or proposal from alternative, third-party workers' comp administrators. But nobody put in a proposal. We did have some people come to a pre-bid meeting, but nobody actually put in a proposal. Comp One did offer to provide for a contract extension, which is what is in front of you. And with that, Ms. Martin, do you have anything to add as our purchasing manager?
No, I can stand there some questions regarding the resolution.
Any discussion on the motion before us? Councilman Nicholson?
I said before, in the previous contract extension, I've always used Comp One. We did have people come to the table on occasion, and their price was more and their service was less. So, I'm happy to see them come back.
Further discussion? Councilwoman Rutherford?
I just want to thank you, as always, for doing your due diligence. You go above and beyond, and when I ask questions about things I don't understand about these contracts, you've been so willing to explain those things. I think it's important that the community knows what Comp One is going to be actually doing for this, for the city, because you explained it to us one more time. Turn the mic on, sweetheart.
To the right, button to the bottom of the right, yep.
Thank you. So, as the mayor explained, they will be providing third-party administrator services, workers' compensation in particular, for former employees who were injured on the job. We have four individuals who remain, who require these administrative services, and so basically, that's what Comp One provides.
Thank you so much for explaining. I just want, some people in the audience don't always understand other people's explanations, so I think it's important that we give them a clear picture of what's really going on. So, I appreciate you. Thank you.
And again, this is a three-year contract extension for third-party administrative services with Comp One. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. Roll call and adoption of the resolution approving that contract, a new contract agreement with Comp One. Clerk Doyle?
McGuinness?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays?
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the annual board of review hardship exemption guidelines?
So, move.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Rutherford. Mayor administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are sensitive to the fact that a lot of families are going through hardship right now, especially given the high rate of inflation. But also, as property values continue to increase in the city, it's meant that the amount owed for taxes has gone up as well, even though the tax rate has generally remained the same for at least the vast majority of property taxmakers. So, we decided to propose increasing the flexibility of hardship guidelines to accommodate the possibility of more families seeking some relief from property tax burdens if they're in a tough financial situation. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Treasurer Prater for some additional information.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. Thanks, Mayor, for that explanation. I just want to give a little bit more information about that. So, this resolution is twofold. One, the board is requesting to increase the federal poverty guidelines from 1%, I'm sorry, from one times the federal poverty guidelines to 1.25. I gave Deputy an illustration of how this would affect our taxable revenue, in addition to proposed assumptions based on this current year's income and averages, to kind of forecast what that will look like moving forward for next year. So, I did speak about the first item. The second item is the board is requesting the discretion to offer three options, which would be 25%, 50%, or 100% hardship if approved by the board. Right now, the board is restricted to only 50%. So, if someone comes before the board in the March, March Board of Review, July Board of Review, or even the December Board of Review with a hardship application, currently the board can only approve them at the one times the federal poverty guideline and at 50%. So, if there's any questions?
All right. Now, Councilwoman Rutherford?
I just think this is a great program, because there are so many people who are homeowners that are really struggling. And to this administration, thank you guys for putting this together, because when I say it's affecting them daily, it is making choices whether they pay their lights, gas, or they pay their taxes on time. And so, this is an opportunity for us to give them a chance to build themselves up, so they can be more financially sovereign in years to come. So, I thank this administration for that, and you as well. Thank you.
No problem.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discuss, Pro Tem Carrington?
I'm sorry, President McGuinness, I just want to double-checking something. So, what are some of the hardship guidelines when it comes to a person of getting hardship?
Well, right now, the guidelines is income-based. So, if you meet the federal, the federal poverty guideline, which currently it's in the illustration that I gave you guys, so it's a spreadsheet. If you look down at the bottom.
Well, no, I read the income, so that's the only guideline is based on income?
Yeah. Basically, yeah, the guideline is based on income. And this affects mainly our seniors, because they are, you know, their income is restricted. So, this is something that I think that is a good opportunity to give them some relief.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. Roll call and adoption of the resolution approving the annual board of review hardship exemption guidelines. Clerk Doyle?
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays?
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. And if you could reiterate our gratitude to the board of review for their, their service to the community, and also let them know that we heard their feedback, and not only we considered their request, we approved it.
Okay. Thank you, and I will do so.
All right. We are now at public comment. President Pro Tem, are there any requests tonight?
Yes, sir. Mr. Quincy Stewart?
And happy recent birthday to you, Mr. Stewart.
Area, thank you, thank you. Okay. For five grueling, arduous days, the Crestwood-Asterwood area, Fulton-Basset was without power. Five days. The infrastructure with regard to DTE is old and has not been updated, and Pontiac, which has led to very costly power outages over the years, particularly in the Woodward Estates subdivision, and particularly on Crestwood-Asterwood-Basset and Fulton Streets. We are the first to go out and the last to be restored. We are sick and tired of throwing out expensive groceries, flooded basements from downed sump pumps, expensive hotel fees, which incidentally, many hotels gouged prices when learning of the shutdown. And lawmakers in Lansing are looking into this. And the lackluster job DTE has done in restoring power and updating infrastructure, at the least to be compatible with more modern equipment, so that at least on a temporary basis during an outage, power can be maintained. This storm indeed provided hefty, robust challenges to DTE. Yet, had better infrastructure been in place, had better proactive measures been initiated, many of us who suffered through this episode may have had far less problems than we did. On another note, as citizens, we were told by this council that changes will be made to this outrageous practice of putting citizens last on the agenda to speak. Many people like myself, who work long hours and then have to come here and sit for two, three, four, even five hours to speak for a measly three minutes, disincentivizes many people to stay. Elderly people, those who suffer from infirmities, are also disincentivized from speaking due to not being able to sit here for hours on end. The profound and glaring contradiction appears every four years. When you want to be first on the ballot when it's to be elected, but when, but when you're in, you place us, the voters, last on the agenda. How can you be so obtuse?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kenny Anderson?
Good evening, and the struggle for Black Democratic human rights continues. The topic of my address this evening is America's Longest Conflict: The War Against Black Men. My comments this evening addresses America's longest war. I'll begin with the definition of war. War is defined as a state of armed conflict between different nations or different groups within a nation. Furthermore, there are three main aspects of war, which are, number one, selection and maintenance of the aim; number two, offensive action; and number three, concentration of force. As a Black man, I say it's inaccurate to say this country's longest war was with Afghanistan, the Taliban, a war that lasted 20 years. I say more accurately that America's longest war is the domestic racist war against Black men, a conflict that's over 400 years old, from 1619 to the present. The three aspects of war I mentioned can be applied to Black men. Indeed, the American government and white civilians selected Black men as a target of this war that has continued nonstop for over four centuries. The offensive actions against Black men have included torture, lynchings, mob violence, vigilanteism, murders, assassination, spreading lies, propaganda, drug imposition, repression, mass incarceration, et cetera. The war against Black men has been sustained by racist politics, policies, and programs. Regarding government racist, repressive programs, the FBI, from its inception, targeted Black male leaders, viewing them as national security threats. The FBI's COINTELPRO program was designed to neutralize notable Black leaders like Marcus Garvey, Malcolm X, Martin Luther King Jr., Fred Hampton, and many, many others. Then there was the American government's War on Drugs operation, a criminalizing war against Black men that included the CIA saturating Black community with crack cocaine, a diabolical, created drug pandemic that caused massive detentions, destabilization, and destruction. Yes, every day in America, wars carried out against Black men in the form of police, military, special unit operations, like the Memphis Police Scorpion Unit, that was involved with the brutal murder of Tyree Nichols. This everyday war targets Black men sleeping, sitting, standing, walking, jogging, and driving. This war against Black men starts early in life with Black boys disproportionately winding up suspended from school, placed in special ed, and placed in the juvenile justice system. On this final day of Black History Month 2023, I charge the American government with war crimes against Black men. The struggle continues.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Renee Beckley?
Excuse me. I come here to speak about the bathrooms at the Bowen Center on 52 Bagley Road. Those bathrooms have been closed due to so-called repairs, which I have not seen work done in months. I believe it started in October. There are two bathrooms that are closed, ones with the two toilets, one for the women, one for the men. So, that's a senior center. So, there's one toilet that's open with one toilet. So, if you're a senior, you gotta wait for like several people in line for one toilet. People, senior citizens, they have health issues. Their kidneys do not hold the urine as the young people. They have, take medicine. But it's one toilet for a couple hundred people. I don't know exactly how many people go in and out of there, maybe 50 or 60 at certain meetings. One toilet at the Bowen Center. It's been months. Then, I don't know if this is true or not, somebody told me it won't be fixed till June. That's crazy. One toilet for the whole Bowen Center. And what's going on there? You, you got it closed off, and the sign said closed due to renovation. And anyway, they only have access to one bathroom, and you got these people waiting for one bathroom. And also, that's unsanitary. You gotta have soap, warm soap and water to wash your hands. You can't just keep using that thing for the sanitizer. The state coming there gonna close you down. And I want all the news media, all the social outlets to understand, here in Pontiac, Michigan, there's only one bathroom at the Bowen Center in Pontiac, Michigan. That's a senior community center. And I don't know if the contractor quit. It does not take that long to fix two bathrooms. I had a bathroom installed when there was nothing there, my family did. It took the contractor, maybe a few months to build it. We didn't have a bathroom. But they installed the toilet, that plumber took no less than six weeks to install it. It doesn't take six or seven months to install toilet and a sink, or whatever he's doing in there, I have no idea. But these people, they want to use the bathroom. I had to go today. I had to wait till I gotta go home. I have to, I get off to work, I eat, and then I drink something. I'm not gonna go way across the center, and I gotta play my bingo game. You see, you're inconveniencing people. So, I mean, if we got to put this in the press and have the news come out here, fine. So, no more patting yourself on the back, saying you a good job, call yourself the Mrs. Smith, say if you could open those bathrooms, and that goes for you too, Tim. Let me see you do that. I will, I'll give you, probably about the end of next month. We'll see if the bathrooms are open.
Thank you. Dr. Deidre Waterman?
I wanted mainly to address this article in the Oakland Press from January 25th about developers suing over cannabis rules delays, what's it, $60 million penalty that the city is facing. But before I do that, I want to thank you, Brett Nicholson, Councilman, for telling us the real reason why the audit, the financial audits required by the charter every year is late. Last year, when I brought that up, and you gave us the real reason, and well, thank you for doing that, because you said that you're just shorthanded. You know, the, the accounting firm that you had right now is smaller, and so they're just trying to catch up. So, thank you for doing that, was forthright. But it happened again next week, last, or a couple of weeks ago, when I said the financial audit is late. I understand later the mayor somehow found a way to blame me about why the audit is late, contrary to what you said, Brett Nicholson, for being clairvoyant about that. It was a long, convoluted answer that Mr. Mayor Graham will give, and I don't know if you can follow it, something about the GERS board didn't do their audit till later, something like that. But I haven't been on the GERS board for a year and a half. He's on the GERS board. It was never late when I was on the GERS board. But any rate, thank you for giving the real answer. And I don't know why the mayor insists on doing that, but that's what keeps bringing me down to council meetings, because if things are saying that aren't true, I need to stand up. for our people and say, no, that's not true. So, if you stop doing that, I wouldn't have to come down here and correct that. But any rate, what is more concerning is this lawsuit, and it has to do with what we were also talking about, and this long saga of what we're trying to do to get adult marijuana in the city. It's important, as I've said a number of times, to be transparent and to follow the process. Now, the reason this one is particularly concerning is that it's the same company that brought two other lawsuits against naming the clerk, Garland Doyle, and the city. And that happened during my term, and it was because the court, it won the lawsuits because they said the city had not followed the process and the procedure. And the bad thing was that I had to pay for all three sets of lawyer attorneys for those lawsuits that we lost. Now, that, apparently, the judge in that suit said that the case was not closed, and apparently, this is what they're bringing back, this third now lawsuit, having won the other two. This is concerning. The other reason it's concerning is because there's some transparency here, and I just, it's so important that we understand what is actually going on. And it says the plaintiff is bringing damages because he alleges the city potentially harmed him and gave him damages because they insisted he not be, work with the SK Properties on the Lakeshore Housing property at Crystal Lake. Now, what does that have to do with what's going on with adult marijuana? So, we just need some transparency to see why these things are tagged together, and why we're putting, the city is putting at that liability for things that don't belong in a transparent and proper process for the city of Pontiac.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. Mr. Chuck Johnson.
Thank you very much, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and those of you here in the audience, and those of you that don't watch them by television. I have to certainly agree with the young lady that spoke about the senior citizen buildings, as well as the other city-owned properties. I've called the attention to Mr. Cooley on several occasions about the manager that's using inferior contractors to do work in our buildings. Now, if that person who he's using don't have the proper license, the proper insurance, and a plan to be able to do the work. Now, I know that the council has always said that the contractors must have certain requirements. Well, if our manager is gonna continue using inferior contractors, just look at this floor for an example, look at the floor in the courthouse for another example, you'll find that we're using inferior contractors, and you need to find out why and stop it. On the other hand, I came down tonight to applaud the mayor and his council for making their selection for Mr. Al Cooley to be our city engineer. I think that it was very important that we selected someone with some experience, if not a hundred percent. I know that when I used truck drivers, I hired truck drivers when I was in business, they didn't all know a hundred percent about that trucking business that I wanted to be involved in. But they were the type of person that I wanted to train and let them learn moving forward and going up. And I think that's what we've done here tonight. We've allowed Mr. Cooley, even though he may not have all the credentials, he's in a position now to move up and have the opportunity to get those credentials. And then on top of that, he had individuals around him, and may still have. I know Jack Kitty, who just retired, was a very strong tool for Al to learn from. I know that there was another engineer, I can't call his name right off, but I know that he has some input with Al's training. And now, we have a person who we can move up the ladder and know that he has the groundwork training, and now he's gonna get future training. So, I applaud the council and the mayor for selecting Al Cooley. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, sir. Mr. Larry Jasper.
Good evening, council, mayor. I heard a lot of good stuff today. You got four million dollars going out for the parks, and three point five for the repairs. But I didn't hear anything about preference for contractors in Pontiac. I didn't hear anything about a wraparound insurance policy that the city could use to help the local people get good paying jobs. We talk about doing that for our residents, but I didn't hear any of that. I initially proposed that years ago. A lot of people here can't afford to get insurance, and they're small businessmen, they do it for half price. They should be paying union wages. I was just talking to another individual, and he says, well, they should have something in there, you know, some kind of money put into themselves, and they should. But, you know, give you an example of, I repair a roof, say it's seven thousand dollars for typical contractor's license. An unlicensed contractor can do it here, or will do it here in the city of Pontiac for two thousand. Well, I'm sure he'd be willing to do a roof here for five thousand and give a thousand dollars towards wraparound insurance policy. Isn't that what COVID help is all about, helping out the local community? Why haven't we done that? Or why don't we doing this? Council can make those changes. I heard another person up here talk about, you know, what are we gonna do for the elders if we have another ice storm? Why don't we take some of that COVID money, set it aside, and have buildings available for them, and cots and coffee, so that they don't have to worry about going to a hotel or losing their oxygen, you know, until we can get the infrastructure done? We need new infrastructure in the city of Pontiac, and if you're counting on DTE to do it, it's the last thing they're gonna do. So, why don't we build the new infrastructure, a green, power-based infrastructure purification system? We can do it. Sure can. Hey, the ex-mayor went through my one hundred and eighty-nine page proposal, and she said she didn't know anything about it, but she had it all color-coded throughout the whole one hundred and eighty-nine pages with all this stuff. I just didn't tell them the recipe. We can do that here. We should be able to, Pontiac should be the shining city of the rest of the country. It's easy enough to do. You're in the center of one of the richest counties around, and yet, the citizens of Pontiac can't get, seem to get any help. Why don't we hire a general contractor to make sure the small businesses actually follow the procedures? She's right. Why is a toilet down for seven months, really? I mean, I could fall backwards and get the toilet working. I mean, these are things that we can handle right now, and I know you guys are doing a lot of good stuff, but those are things we're not looking at. We need to look at those things. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, sir. I can close our public comment. President McGinnis.
All right, we have one discussion item. It's the Oakland County Expanded Transit Services and Bus Lines, and this is really just sort of a check-in FYI. You may recall that we, as a city council, took a very proactive stance when it came to expanding and solidifying public transportation in Oakland County, specifically to benefit Pontiac residents. The voters of Oakland County resoundingly passed that millage, and so, as a result of that passage, Oakland County government is now implementing that expanded transit services, as well as the smart bus lines. So, I know that we'll keep this conversation going. We just want to give you an FYI that good news is underway. Councilman Goodman, anything you want to specifically identify that the expanded routes that have been proposed that would impact and intersect the city of Pontiac?
Yeah, so, it's kind of hard to tell from reading it in black and white, but one of the most beneficial things that's happening is the new route that is being introduced that goes into Rochester. That would be a connecting route that you'd have to take from Pontiac to what seems like would be about OU-ish, and from OU into Rochester. But finally, being able to actually ride public transit in a city that, for so long, fought against it, it's a very good thing, getting people connected from regions that they normally aren't. There is a modification to the seven ninety cross-town, as well as an additional stop that is now in Bloomfield Hills, because for the longest time, the smart bus did not stop in Bloomfield Hills. So, the fact that now, because of the countywide opt-in, Bloomfield can't just say, no poor people here.
That's it.
It's an amazing thing. There's that. The A fifty-one parking right that goes down Telegraph has been extended, as well as now the seven forty, if I remember correctly, goes into Novi. So, now, there is the ability to be able to actually, in some way, if you were to ride this bus, be able to make it from Pontiac to Twelve Oaks Mall. It would take a while.
That's all right.
But it is now possible nonetheless, when it wasn't before. So, very good news to see some additional routes.
And we anticipate more expansions to come, but we want to let you know about those additional services in many of these Pontiac residents. Councilman Rutherford.
Real quick, do y'all know the power of what just happened? People who couldn't apply for certain jobs or didn't have transportation have an opportunity to apply for these jobs. For example, if I wanted to work at Somerset, which happens being sure I could take a bus down there, could y'all change the route? Shouts out to you guys who fall for it. One more thing, I like to shop at Twelve Oaks Mall, not that I'm gonna take the bus, but if I chose to, I could because of this. So, I think y'all should give yourselves a hand as citizens, because y'all did this. It wasn't us, it was us as a community effort. So, shouts out to y'all for the buses. That's it.
Uh, a little housekeeping item. It was Oakland County, in Oakland County, it was Pontiac's East Side, District Seven, that hired the highest level of yes votes.
And what was the second? And what was the?
I'm not sure. It's all basic, but I can tell you that.
It was District One, thank you so much.
The percentage of yes.
It was District, it was South Side.
District Two turned out more voters, but I want to have some certificates.
Okay, but we gonna keep doing this all night?
All right, so for the sake of time, anything else on this discussion item? All right, with that, we move now to number, the old number thirteen, now number fourteen on the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to proceed in a closed session pursuant to Sections eight D and eight H of the Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen point two six eight E and H, to discuss, to consider the purchase of certain real property in the confidential legal opinion of council connection with the purchase of real property?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. We are intentionally going into closed session towards the end of the night after public comment, so that way, you, the citizens, were able to do agenda address, you were able to hear all of the business considered, and also be able to do public comment without having to wait around for the closed session, when, again, we're considering the purchase of certain real property and a confidential legal opinion of council in connection with the purchase of real property. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. We are now in closed session as of nine seventeen PM. We will be voting to come out of closed session when we return. Thank you. Thank you.
Order, order. Could I please have a motion to come out of closed session?
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Goodman and seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford that we come out of closed session. Hearing no discussion, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. We are now at a closed session at 2:07, 10:07 PM. And thank you very much, Pro Tem Carrington, for staying this long. We know you have a family obligation. Could I please have a motion to suspend the rules to consider as the next item of business a resolution to authorize Phase Two ESA in the amount of $15,800 for real property site condition consideration?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we move to suspend the rules to allow an item of business that resolution identified to be considered now. Any clarification on what we got going? This is about suspending the rules so we can take something up that wasn't already on the agenda. Clerk Doyle, roll call.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The rules have been suspended. Could I please have a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing NTH Consultants LTD to contract with them for a Phase Two ESA in the amount of $15,800?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. That resolution is before us. It reads, "The Pontiac City Council hereby resolves that we authorize Mayor Tim Grimal to enter into an agreement with NTH Consultants LTD to conduct a Phase Two ESA in the amount of $15,800 for real property under consideration." So that's been moved and that's been seconded. Is that resolution language adequate to the attorneys and the administration?
He noted.
So the attorney deems that that language is adequate? All right, so the resolution language is before us. We're talking about a Phase Two ESA, $15,800, NTH Consultants LTD is the entity we are engaging with. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We are at City Council Communications. For the sake of time, they are written and we encourage the community to prove them. Mayor's office, your communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three very quick announcements. Number one is tomorrow, March 1st, right here at City Hall at 6:00 PM, we have a youth and teen community town hall meeting. We take seriously our obligation to provide really great youth recreational programming and enrichment programming, and we want to hear from young people directly. So I know I announced this last week, but it is not here in City Council chambers. It's actually on the first floor in the lobby of City Hall. So we hope to see young people tomorrow. Also, want to just make sure that people who are interested in putting in proposals or bids to be general contractors for the Pontiac Home Repair Program are aware that the deadline to respond and provide proposals is March 3rd, which is this Friday. And then lastly, just an early heads up that the annual citywide community cleanup is happening from April 17th to April 23rd.
Very good. With that, your closing comments, Mayor Grimal.
Well, just again, to be really clear, and Councilman Nicholson indicated this as well, contrary to misinformation that continues to be shared at these meetings, we received an extension from the state to complete our audit. Our audit is not late. And I also want to emphasize, as I did previously, that the reason for that extension is pretty simple and straightforward, that the two VIBAs, the police and fire VIVA that ensures that healthcare is provided to retirees from the city, who are police officers or firefighters, and the general employees VIVA that provides healthcare and health insurance to general retirees have not yet merged, and that has delayed the completion of the audit. And the reason why they have not yet merged is because the previous administration, the previous mayor, included ill-advised language in the settlement agreement with the City of Pontiac Retired Employees Association that required something which is impossible to obtain before that merger can occur, and that's approval from the IRS. And the IRS simply does not provide such approvals. And as a result, that settlement agreement has to be amended in order to take that requirement out of it, which should have never been put in it, before those two VIBAs can be merged.
Clerk Doyle, closing comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll be brief. I'll just echo what the mayor said. We continue to receive misinformation from the previous mayor at these meetings, in particular about the marijuana process. Thank you.
Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford, the brightest light this side of the Mississippi.
Save yourself. Good evening, everyone. Two roads diverged in a woods, and I, I took the road less traveled by, and that has made all of the difference. That is a quote, my favorite poem by Robert Frost. Every week we have to take a road. We take the high road, we take the low road. It is my hope that we continue to take the high road of integrity, mutual respect, and learning how to talk to people. One of the things I've been working on with my life coach is learning how to approach people. Before I say something that could get me in trouble, I pull out my deck of cards, I shuffle them up, and I say, "Mel," is this thoughtful, helpful, important, necessary, and kind? We, as a community, must continue to be the example that we say we want to have set. So I say that in saying this, let's try to be kind to each other this week. Let's try to be sensitive about what we say, how we say, and how we deliver it, because what you say in private will eventually be exposed in public. I know this from example and from experience. I want to also send a special prayer to all of the people in District One who are still without power, those who still do not have food, those who still do not have the resources. It is my hope, as I stated earlier, that this administration, as well as that the school board, come together and try to come up with a better program so when we have these outages, excuse me, and we have these difficulties, that we work together as a community. There is no I in team, and that includes Melanie Cherie Rutherford. Last but certainly not least, March 25th, we're having our District One meeting. It's going to be at 3:00. I had a lot of calls because people don't always see my suggestions or see my posts on Instagram and on Facebook. We did not have a meeting because even Superwoman, as I call myself, AKA Mel the Deliverer, has to take a rest. So I ask that you pray for others, pray for yourself, and be the solution and not always become my problem. And then always have a good evening, good night.
Big City Nicholson, your closing comments.
The only comment I want to give is that, once again, the mayor, one of my fond District Two residents, previous mayor, thank you, Ms. Waterman, continues to twist my words. When I, what I was talking about needing an additional accounting resource was because the previous resource, again, was no longer affordable, and yes, we were short staff, having to let go of the previous finance director. Now, conflating that with the audit was not my intention. The audit, the reason, again, that we had to ask for and the only reason that the state would grant an audit extension is because we needed to turn in those audited financials from those VIBAs. But that is all I have to say tonight. I have no other closing comments.
The birthday baby himself, Mikhail Jedediah Goodman.
Funny enough, middle name is Kamario. It's like, I have probably one of the blackest middle names that anyone was expecting for me to have, to be honest with you. To just put it simply, I hope everyone has a great night. My main comment was the resolution. The past couple of days have been ridiculous for the fact that I've seen way too many people not have power recently. For work, I work for Oakland Forward, so we did a progressive power summit to discuss, like, progressive policies that are important to have in Oakland County. And we did that in the Birmingham Unitarian Church on Saturday in the dark with no heat, like, with no power from 9:00 to 1:00 in a cold freezing room. Intentionally, we made sure that after we planned this and people were going to come, we stayed. And the fact that so many people stayed in a freezing cold room on a Saturday with no lights, no electricity, no Wi-Fi, to discuss essentially the reason why we were in the dark goes to just how tired people are of the situation that we're currently dealing with. So I hope that we, as a body, continue to do what we can to provide for our citizens. Obviously, hopefully, these things stop happening because it shouldn't happen. But separate from that, I want to say thank you to everyone for all the birthday wishes. It's nice to still be the youngest person on council, just a year older now. Very happy to keep doing the job and, yeah, I just want to say thank you, obviously, to everyone, especially Council President, for providing me sustenance and all the gummy candy I could want for at least the next two weeks. So I really appreciate it.
Enjoy the horse hoof candy. The oracle of the northeast side, the indomitable, the pugnacious, the honorable, William Ezekiel Parker.
Salt of Swin.
Thank you, Brother President. First, I would just want to say, I believe that was Stopping by the Woods on a story evening, snowy evening, it's Robert Frost. Which brings me to my point that March is National Reading Month, and as most of you may not know, Mr. Taj Mahal is doing some filming and pitch-taking and asking us to help him to put together a film, I think, of our reading habits and our reading processes. And he asked me to make sure I remind you guys that March is National Reading Month, and he needs us assistance in that regard. I want to thank Pastor Barry for coming and praying for us this afternoon. You know, as I walked out of our closed session, I looked around the room, it continued to remind me of just how dedicated Brother James Sabish was, because he would have been sitting just right here, waiting for us to come out and hear what we talked about. And so for those of you who may be interested in going to his memorial service, it is going to be held Friday, March 3rd, 11:00 AM, at White Chapel Memorial Cemetery, if you want to go. I'm sure, if you could just call me, I can give you some of the directions, but that's what we're doing. I had an opportunity to talk with Sister Lucy Payne. She's doing well. She has her good and days and her bad days. Today was a half-and-half day for her, but she's doing well, and she asks that we just continue to pray for her. As we know, Sister Kathy Desro, who would also usually would be here, wasn't here, so please keep her lifted in your prayer. It was good to see Brother Kenny Anderson here this evening. He brings some good thoughtful process in what he does here, and I just wanted to let him know that we appreciate him being here. Please continue to remember Pastor James Keyes in your prayers. Please let us know about the, please keep, remember that March is Pastor Nathan Talbot's anniversary. I believe he'll be celebrating the 15th through the 19th of March. I'm sure he'll be providing more information on that. And just want to remind everybody that tomorrow is my sweet honey bunny's birthday. Please keep her lifted in your prayers and tell her happy birthday if you happen to run across her. And I'll be home in a little bit, baby. With that, I'll say good evening.
Introducing the one and the only, the man we call Magic Mike, President, Mr. Mike McGinnis.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you, everyone, that made February such an impactful Black History Month in the City of Pontiac. I think that throughout the community and a lot of our, throughout our organizations, our nonprofits, our places of worship, and here at our City Hall and our senior center, we marked it in a substantial and tied in the local perspective. I look forward to us being able to continue that in the years to come. Next month, March is Women's History Month, and we hope to amplify and celebrate the many female community leaders that we have had through the generations. And then finally, I'll just say, truly, I am sorry that we have had to say goodbye to James Sabish, and I wish that I had shown him more gratitude and kindness when I had the chance. And I'm sorry that there, when there are people that are around so constantly, you take them for granted that they will always be there. And that's hard with life, that so quickly and so suddenly, without, of course, warning, but also, it's not, it's never done on your timetable and your preferred timeframe. And so it's a strong reminder that we should always hold dear and precious everyone in our life, even if we just see them in passing. And I will not soon forget James Sabish, and I'm grateful for the time he invested in the City of Pontiac and the love that he showed his fellow men. So with that, God bless you, James, and may you continue to soar on eagle's wings. Is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker and seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no discussion, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 10:23 PM. Be safe and have a good night.